Ms. Buckman?
Here.
Ms. Guy?
Here.
Ms. Hulst?
Here.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Ms. Sigmund is on her way.
On the way, yep.
Ms. Solomon is at the back. Dr. Warner?
Here.
Medicure, you have a point?
Thank you. We have no one participating electronically. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Motion is true.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, concerns? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Onto 3.01, information items, the annual strategic plan update to include an end of year academic report. Who's up?
Me.
This is Dr. Schutz.
Give your name, Dr. Schutz.
Thank you all. Going to take us through a brief presentation on our strategic plan progress and then perhaps we'll hit those academic measures that we're looking for. So just first as a reminder, our strategic planning approach is a responsive strategic planning approach, right? So this is something that we write and then put on a shelf. We try to refine, we try to evaluate, and make any changes that we need to over the course of the five years of our plan. So we just completed year one of our five-year plan, and we now, tomorrow, launch year two. And so what we've done is tried to look at the areas that where we are finding success and then, of course, identify those areas for improvement and then move into years two through five. The methodology that we have instituted for tracking our progress, well, let me back up. We know we have our four goals, and then associated with each of those goals, we have stated objectives. And then associated with each of those objectives, we have our tactics. And there's that chart that was attached to board docs where you can see the giant spreadsheet where we have tracked all of the different tactics that are associated with those objectives and are then associated with skills. So the way-
This is the chart that Dr. Schutz was talking about. It's the one on legal size paper. And it kind of goes each goal and objective by-
Oh, you like- oh, I'm glad you like that one.
Right, so what the chart is allowing us to do is to identify the primary department that is ultimately responsible for coordinating the efforts and monitoring those, the activities towards the tactics that then, of course, leads to the objectives and then leads to the goal. And so each of the department leaders is tasked with, biannually, so every six months, to evaluate the tactics that are associated as the lead under those departments on a zero-to-three scale. So it's a four-point scale. And you can see on the slide here, I've identified which each of those categories correspond to. Essentially, a zero, we're still in the implementation, state planning period, right? And then once we start to move into one, we're looking at the preliminary stage, things that we might need to refine. And then moving into two, our activities are well underway. And then at three, our activities are complete. A reminder, since we just finished year one, we don't anticipate to be too far along on our continuum, right? So we've calculated a mean for each of those objectives. So the tactics were all assigned to zero, one, two, or three, and then we calculated a mean for each of those. It just allows us to have a numeric device to track our progress. Oops.
Could you define mean?
It's an average.
Okay.
Right? So you'll see here, for goal one, ensure meaningful post-secondary outcomes for every student. And so here are the five stated objectives. And so each, you have the little m, that stands for mean. So for example, our objective identified here at the top, we gave it a mean of a 0.5. And what that means is all of the tactics that were specified under those objectives, again, you can refer to your tracking document, were given that zero, one, two, or three rating. And then we calculated a mean, so an average for each of those, and those are the associated means with the objectives. You can see here that we range for our goal one from a 0.3 to a 1.1. Moving on to goal two, supporting high expectation for academic performance and expanding opportunities for every student. Just as for goal one, we have the associated five objectives to accomplish goal one, and we have the calculated mean for each of the tactics associated with those objectives. We range here from 0.8 to a 1.2. And here's how we have rolled our preliminary SOL assessments data because it's associated with goal two, our student performance. So this first slide is showing our combined pass rate for SOL assessment. And I want to just give you some context because there's a lot of information on this slide. So combined pass rate, what does that mean? That's how, that is calculating both the growth as established by VDOE as well as the student pass rate, whether the student passed or failed the test. You'll note here that we are taking a three-year lens for the school year 2021, '22, and then our most recent school year, 2023. Couple important points to note as we move through these slides. The first is that the methodology changed between 2021, 2022, and our most recent school year, and how growth was calculated. So in the 2021, 2022 school year, growth was calculated two ways. A student could be deemed having grown by demonstrating a change according to the VDOE metrics between the fall assessment and the spring assessment of that year or by demonstrating growth and improvement in a spring-over-spring comparison. The change for this past school year is the students could only demonstrate growth from a spring-to-spring comparison. So obviously, if we had more students who were able to demonstrate growth under the old methodology as the one that we had implemented in this most recent year.
Comparing apples to bananas.
Can you, can you say that last sentence again? Because I think I grabbed what you just said, but I'm not 100% sure.
Essentially, the way that students could demonstrate growth changed, the VDOE changed its methods between-
To negatively impact what we're seeing in the growth?
They've basically gotten stricter in how they've determined a student would be deemed having grown. Right? So they want to see that year over year as opposed to within a year.
You can think about, like, you expect to see a drop in the fall? Although, when were they tested in the fall?
Very early in the fall.
Very early in the fall. So if you've had the summer off and you've had a decline, you're more likely to show growth by the spring versus spring to spring. So I can see why they did it, but yeah, I can also see how it impacted.
Right?
Is this a post-COVID adjustment also?
Yes. Incorrect. Growth was implemented for the first time in the 2021, '22 school year. So this is something just to think about when we're looking at a year over year.
Wait, wait, it was first implemented in '21, '22 or it was first implemented '22, '23?
It was first implemented in '21, '22. And then this most recent year, the one we just ended, '22, '23, is where they made that refinement in the methodology.
So they, they-
So they tweaked it. Correct.
They've had three different methodologies in three consecutive years.
And that's what I wanted to, that's what I, I just wanted to make sure that I, so I can account a little bit for the dip that happened between the red and the gray-
Correct.
-as being a change.
Right. And then the second thing that I was going to bring to everyone's attention-
Is actually the change.
Is that these data are preliminary because they are not going to be finalized and released to us until September. And that's important to note because our high school substitute tests are still coming in. So we, if a student has failed, they can now pass because we get a substitute test in AP, IB, PSAT, SAT. So essentially, this would be our baseline, and we will, and every year, we note that the overall mean, the average of the pass rate will increase as we get those substitute tests accounted for.
So the change just in growth, the, has become more stringent, the metrics?
Yes, no?
Okay.
Yes. And so this is our division totals. And this is the same, again, we're looking at the division totals, so grade three through 12. This is broken down by our demographic groups, racial and ethnic groups you'll see on the left, and then our economically disadvantaged, students with disabilities, and our EL students overall on the right. Again, broken down by our three years.
Dr. Schutz, may I for just one second?
Yes.
This is really encouraging on a number of different fronts because they moved the goalposts. And even with the preliminary data that we know will jump in a positive direction for us, we still outpaced where we were this time last year, even with them moving the goalposts. So we, we know that when these data become final, we're going to be looking at a much better picture, and that's even with them changing the rules on us.
I'm just concerned when I, I'm just questioned. So the EL students almost doubled their pass rates, which is kind of a remarkable statistic and kind of unanticipated because although I know that in 2021 was COVID-
They were all in school every other day.
They were all in school every other day.
Yeah, and you, but you also made substantial investments in what he saw in the last two years.
I mean, this is crazy, it doesn't-
It kind of shows that-
But you just don't normally see that kind of growth-
But when you offer, when you give support-
It's fantastic.
Also, keep in mind, we didn't have as many students who tested that year. We had a lot of students who did not test.
So this is a representative 30,000 every student that tests.
These tests, so the first in 2021 are not necessarily representative of our student population because fewer students test.
Well, but to that end still, even with our students with disabilities, there's a pretty substantial jump. And I, and I would say that this is the point where you kind of reach back and pat yourself on the back because you identified an area that needed investment and additional support, and you invested in those areas, and it had an impact, clearly. So that's a, that's a good thing.
I mean, this is better than the all-students number. I just, I think it's fantastic.
We're getting there, baby steps.
It would be helpful to put in perspective to see the numbers of students. And some of those students may be carryover students, so it just depends on if they've been with us for a while or whatever. There's so many factors, I'm not sure you can read too much out of this.
I'm so glad you asked. So every school, every score, every demographic for every single one of our sites is in this lovely packet that's also attached to board docs that has the number of students tested and what their percentages. We can do that, too.
Well, if it's on your screen, you can blow it up on your screen.
Like number.
Then you can't read that much of it.
If you're awful.
Okay, and I'm sorry, it's taken.
So we're looking at this, then, just so I know I'm reading this correctly, go over the numerator-denominator combined rate. How am I reading this across the board?
The number of students who passed over the number of students who tested. So-
Who is that?
No, no, so, so the very first line-
So I know what the, yeah, I know what the first line, but how is that, is this what the student did the first time versus the second time? Like, how does this-
So this, the very first line says Andrew G. Wright Middle School. And subject is English. All of the students that tested at AG Wright were 983 tests that were administered.
Okay.
689 of them had a, had a, an SOL score that either by growth or through achievement reached a positive outcome.
Okay.
Which is approximately 70.09%.
I get it. So how many students don't test at all?
Very few, and it kind of depends by subject area and content. And also, some students with disabilities may not take the standard SOL they may take, the alternative assessment program. And that, too, also contributes in a way as well.
Yeah, it might be, it might be good in future to also have that number in there, just how many, how many students actually did not take the test.
Yeah, and you've got a pretty good representative sample because based on the size of the school, you got just short of 1,000 kids and 983 of them tested. So, but that's, that's a good point. Thank you. I'm sorry about your shirt.
Oh, no, that's just, thank you for the feedback.
So how many, so only the third grade takes SOLs, though, at elementary school? Third, fourth?
It starts at third, like, it's the first.
Just different numbers of tests, and they have gone down.
Different subjects.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So you brought up elementary. I have a slide here that talks about breaking our, basically, the next set of slides are taking that same overall division totals and breaking them down by level. So we have our elementary students. And then the slide behind it is the same elementary lens for demographic groups. Same for middle. And then for high. And again, just a quick reminder that the high school totals will increase as those substitute tests come in. Okay, back to the strategic plan as a whole. Our third goal is to ensure that every student, staff, and family member receive a safe, engaging, and welcoming environment in our schools. We have our four stated objectives. They're stated, we're detaining those, that goal. And we have a range here of a mean of 1.2 to a 2.0.
It seems like the, that a good amount of goal three has a higher percentage of completion as far as what we're working on. Okay. And four, actually, too, I think is that.
Right, and so within our third goal here, we're talking about the environment, and so obviously, we're looking here towards some of our discipline data. So the next three slides I'm presenting here to you are in-school suspension. The two pie charts represent, the one on the left, the smaller, is the breakdown of student enrollment by our racial and ethnic categories. And the larger pie on the right is the percentage represented by each of those categories of the total number of incidents. Same for our short-term suspension.
Is that blue, am I reading that correctly? The native Hawaiian?
It's a very small sliver.
That's not that big blue.
The big blue is-
The big blue is the one on the, sort of the darker blue.
Between the blue and the red?
Is white.
I don't really see it.
Looked right.
That's, oh, that looks, that's like a lot, I couldn't figure out.
It's so, I know, it's so small.
And it's, the color's close to the, the one for the white. Oh, there it is.
Dr. Schutz, if I, if I may for just a second, one of the things that you're going to observe and one of the things that we hope we're pointing out is that there is disproportionality in student disciplinary consequences relative to the population. We're sensitive to this, we're paying attention to this. We're a little bit better than national averages, actually, a lot better than national averages and a little bit better than state averages. But it is something that we're paying attention to, and it is a data point, and we're not hiding from it. We're, we're putting it out there. It's something that we are being attentive to.
Could we get the data that shows based on English as a second language or students with disabilities or economically disadvantaged?
So I'm so glad that you have it. So we have a companion document that goes, that goes along with that.
I feel like this is like a, like they set this up. It's like a, it's like their percussion.
Yeah.
Harder to come up with a question.
And actually, I'm glad, I'm glad that you did point out because that did not make it into this document. So we will add that, absolutely.
What?
Yeah. But that's okay.
I just think that I would like to see if there's-
Oh, no, there's a correlation.
Because it's not necessarily raised by sometimes other family pressures and stuff going on at home, students with disabilities.
So I have, what may or may not be a dumb question, but do we, so I bet, although I think I've stated this before, we don't have anything that says suspension per offense. Right, like, what is our, what is our average suspendable offense in our school system related to this data as well? Like, we know bullying is a big issue, there've been fights, so do we have something that can help us understand?
You had a year-end report in your, in your June boardroom packet in consent. That's, that was your year-end report that had the suspension by offense?
Oh, oh, we was through that one, alright.
Broken out by school.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So these incidents, for example, I'm looking at slide 21, long-term suspension and expulsion recommendations, and it said 134 incidents. Will that, does that mean it's 134 different unique students? Or it could be one student, multiple?
It's incident, not students and counts.
So do you have any sense of how many of these were repeated?
I have to, I would have to look in.
In the long-term suspension, unlikely. For the short-term suspension, likely. But we can do it in duplicated and duplicated numbers. That's a great thing to collect.
It might be interesting because I have talked to principals who told me they had one student that accounted for 75% of the incidents in their school. And so, yeah. And so that conceivably would change what these numbers look like. But it might not, I don't know.
But it can give good context in this discussion.
Should we break that down by grade? Are you, so like elementary, middle, high?
Yeah, just elementary, middle, high, not numbers.
I think that's imperative, I reckon, this one.
Yeah, and we're also trying to save you from looking at 97 slides.
And with long, if they are on a long-term suspension with recommendation for expulsion, it would only count as one?
It would be just that one incident.
Right, so it's not like Bob got suspended, and then Bob got expelled, now it's two things?
Correct, if you want to.
Because it's the same offense, so it's by offense, right?
But you could get a long-term suspension, come back in the year, and then go to an expulsion. More likely in the other one.
Yeah, it's more likely in the other scenario, for sure. And then, this is good and bad at the same time. It's, it's a high number for our comfort level, for sure. It's less than 1%, but it should be. It should be less than 1%, substantially less than 1%. So this, this is great context. We're, we're still outperforming some other areas, for sure, in this space, but, but, but for us, it's still an area of concern.
But for me, what is significant is the basis for these recommendations. You know, what is the, it's, it's not here, but whether we're, our percentage is high or low to me is less significant than what are the offenses that we are putting this on for. Because to a certain extent, we heard from teachers last year that said, you know, we need more discipline or else the students will be out of control and we can't control the classroom. So I'm, you know, less concerned about the numbers than I am the reason that it's being applied and that it's being applied uniformly across the schools.
So I second that as well, I'm sorry, that is, I second that as well because I do think, like, even in looking for the monthly reports, you can see the amount of disrespect in the classroom to the teacher. Like, those incidents and violations of student conduct were exceptionally high. I don't know how many of them met with the suspension or whether those kids were just returned back to the classroom, and I have no idea how that was applied across the board. So I agree, I think that's definitely something that should come just to our attention as well.
That's, that's a great segue to what gets paid attention to, shows up in the data. So the next slide deals with threat assessment, something that we've been way more attentive to. And as a result of that, being more attentive to it.
Right, so this is our number of threat assessments per grade level. And we have two years of comparison. You notice a difference between the years, but what is important to notice, Dr. Taylor was just mentioning, that we implemented a much stricter evaluation, communication, methodology. And so that's reflected in the increase in reports. People are paying attention and they're reporting for us.
We've asked them to.
It's just kind of sad that the preschoolers and the 12th graders are almost on the same-
That's not-
Right?
Same number of answers.
But look at second, but look at, you know, second grade, our good kid, our very, you know, early entering.
Well, they're, they're in-
Those 11th graders are pretty level, aren't they?
Well, and again, these are not, these are not unique, necessarily all different kids.
It's true.
Right, like the 40 for, for grade number two.
These are incidents.
These are incidents, again, incidents, right.
Because like I said, I've been hearing about individual children.
Then we get into your question about how many of these are repeat.
Right. Yeah.
This is a great example, too, as we are continuing to evolve in our strategic planning and using that really as our guide, that we are implementing much more consistent methodology and communication with our staff and really keeping everyone focused on achieving our tactics, objectives, and ultimately, our goals.
Well, and I also like that, you know, with this data, you know, we had a, it's kind of been like a layering effect. You know, we've asked for the stronger discipline and for, you know, what's going on in the classroom, teachers to be supported, administrators to be supported, and so on. But then to add on another layer this year where if you get the out-of-school suspension, we bring in the parents because we want them to be part of our partnership in, you know, their child's success. And so I think that that is going to also have an effect on this, too, because the parents are going to be coming in.
Absolutely.
What would also be helpful to see on this, and maybe come to the next slide, is how many of these were founded as true threats versus unknown?
That's a good, that is not on the next slide.
It's not.
But I think that's significant because-
It is.
If we have that great, a difference from one year to the next, I, as a parent, would want to know, oh my gosh, this is being, you know, these are all, you know, founded threats, and what are we doing about it? Or, you know, if it's the same or a lower percentage that is being found, you know, as a, I'll just say, verified threat.
And Erin, I can tell you that this means that we're paying more, closer attention.
No, it's good.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's, it's good, I just, it's my note.
And you fix a problem, we can identify it.
And then how many schools, you know, does this involve? Are there some schools that have zero and other schools that have, you know, multiple?
But again, that gets to, that gets to what you were sort of suggesting, which is, you know, if one principal or one school is not actually reporting stuff, then their numbers may be lower. And, and then if other people are reporting stuff, then their numbers may be higher. So there can be a little bit of concern about.
Right, and that's what I was suggesting, in the discipline. But the threat assessment, I think, is very different. I think the threat assessment is at a much higher level in what we're doing. So, you know, from a, a, you know, overhead standpoint, I'd like to see, are these clustered in certain schools or are they pretty much spread out, you know, among the whole division?
We have those slides, they were in your bulletin, I think it was in June, where we did present three. This is one view, but we did present it by, by each of the level. I could, I'd be happy to send those back out.
Well, if I get the paper, I'm much better at studying than I am.
Yeah, yeah, of course, I'd be happy to share them back. That way, you can make your comparison. And moving on to goal four, supporting and investing in all staff. We have our five stated objectives here, ranging in our assessment of a mean of 1.2 to 1.3. So hopefully, this presentation has demonstrated that we are in, underway on our strategic plan, moving along on our stated tactics to make some achievement towards our objectives and then ultimately towards our goals. Reminder that we just completed year one and that we are now entering year two of a five-year plan.
Thank you.
Can I just reiterate, I love this chart?
I'm glad you love my chart.
I do. This makes my heart happy.
I like it's a spreadsheet, too, from, I do.
I just have a question about my heart happy.
So like, when you have on there, on, again, the chart that Ms. Hofstadter is pointing out, when you have, say, for instance, what was it? Like, I guess it's objective 321A. You gave it progress three. But there's no one that's checked as having been part of that. So I'm not, like, in some of the places, you have check marks, like, these are, it'll say principals are supposed to be in, but no principals are checked. Is it just understood that all principals are checked?
Right. So I was really trying to keep this because otherwise, we have columns out till forever.
Yeah, and I didn't, if I didn't see an X, but I saw, but I saw three and then I didn't know who did it, okay.
So the X is just indicating area of responsibility?
Right, right.
Right, okay, yeah.
But I just, in some places, I didn't see anybody. And so I was like, oh, wait a minute.
Yeah, and you have, you have a column also in green that identifies literally the person who's supposed to be doing it. And then the checks are, are like the support cast.
Okay. Oh, support cast. Okay, okay, that's good. Okay, thanks.
I have one other question. Is the mean for the, the, the average for the completion of the first year? Or is that a?
So like, if this is the-
No, I'm, I'm back to the mean.
This is the mean right here. So what they did was they took the objective and then everything got a number, and then the mean is here at the bottom for each.
Well, isn't that a little skewed with the things that we haven't even started yet?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, that's what, that's what she said.
Right, yeah, that's right. Because it's a zero-to-three scale, right? Because we're only, we just finished year one. Most of our activities are still at either the, the planning, beginning implementation, or refining, right?
But I even saw, so like, if you have a three, are you going to, is that something you're still going to revisit over the time during the?
So my, that's my question, too.
Okay, so you, you picked a really good example.
Okay.
So the, the item that got a three, for the, for the listening audience, is administer division-level semi-annual climate surveys to student, staff, and parents. So yes, that's been complete, we've done that activity. We will continue to do that activity.
Okay.
But we, we are not in the planning phase of doing that. We, we have a, a tool, we're using the tool, we're collecting data.
And will you tweak it a few?
Yeah, oh, yes.
Is that part of, if it needs a three?
And that's my question, so once it hits a three, is it removed? Or is it just listed as ongoing or complete?
Ongoing. Yeah.
Because town halls, getting data from town halls, we didn't stop doing that, just because you did it well last year.
That's right.
But I did notice that objective 3 and objective 4.
We've gotten to a point where we can continue to use it.
And, and you know, we're not gonna, we're using this to hold ourselves accountable, really more than anything else. And, you know, these are the things that we committed to saying that we know we could do to help move the needle. And so, a 1 isn't necessarily a bad thing, but it very much is a status of just kind of where we are at the moment.
I don't even think a 0 on year 1 is, is, yeah, I mean, for the number of things that are on here.
It's where we are today.
I don't think, for, I still think there's a lot of things that have been completed. And for year 1 to 0, in the few categories I see it, it's not a bad thing either.
So, do we have goals for next year? I mean, this shows what we're averaging this year. I mean, do we, is there someone that says next year, we want to move this 0 to a 1, or is it 2 to a 3, or?
So, when the board adopted its strategic plan, it did, it did kind of adopt a timeline of kind of scoping this out and we're following that timeline to this. And there are several of these items that are also included in your five-year budget that are connected to it, because some of them are resource-dependent. So, so to that end, yes, we are, are moving towards that. You know, and, and I might even push back on a couple of these to be like, the first one, 1.1.1A, revise and update the college and career readiness plan. There's a ton of work that's been invested in that. But in fairness, we very much are at the, the planning phase and not at the, at the implementation phase. Even though there's been.
I would say you've been collecting a lot of data.
Even though it's 0, it's a 0, it still reflects a considerable amount of work done.
Yes, there's work done there, yeah.
That's right.
Not unless you put something you have, because if I put a 0, I'm gonna think, oh, nothing's done. So, you might want to put somewhere, somewhere in, there's probably 0, doesn't mean we haven't done anything.
There's a scare to score, just this initial planning stage, no progress.
Well, still, to me, that's 0 is 0. Sounds like, what if you're doing it, if you're planning, you're making, you must be making some progress in your planning as opposed to not doing anything.
Just gathering data.
All right, well, I thank you very much. Your question.
Let's go to our next, 3.02 preliminary FY25, FY34, large capital improvement in 3R infrastructure project planning. That's enough. Okay, and, hello, Mr. Towery.
Hello.
Welcome.
How are you all?
Very excited to see all of the paving projects that was done at Perry Farm. Oh, my gosh. It did, it looks really good, like, the lines painted, everything paved, like, way more than I expected. And I was completely tickled today. Thank you.
I'm glad to hear that, we were, we were pretty pleased with how it turned out.
I bet.
So, I don't know if you've been, how, you guys been in the back of the school there?
No, I just went out and colored the chalk on the sidewalk and drove all over the paint area and said, it's smooth, it's wonderful.
Hold on a second, for the record, you just laid this pavement and Ms. Randall just ruined it?
No, I did the sidewalk, I drove all over the pavement.
All right, just wanted to bring clarity to that.
Yeah, I drove my hover, like, smooth sailing all over.
Smooth sailing, feels good driving.
It did, thank you.
Left Russell there, like, on the Oregon Trail.
As we kick off the CIP, capital improvement plan discussion, just noting that according to the budget calendar, we still have, we're not actually adopting this, the final, we're not voting on this until October. So, we brought this once last month, we talked to the FABC a few times, we wanted to bring plenty, bring this forward with plenty of time and lots of discussion.
Thank you.
So, just wanted you to know that we're not in a major rush. You know, we want to start to, we're looking for a direction from the school board on how we continue moving forward and how we want to revise this. But we do have this session next month, and then we would vote in October.
And as we kind of dive into this, I just wanted to say special, some special thanks to a few of our staff members. Lionel, who's sitting back there. Karen Papa, who you all are probably familiar with, but doesn't usually try to come to these, she usually tries to stay away from these meetings. And then Mike Roberts, our new assistant director. They've spent a lot of time over the past six months. So, this process for us, we actually started meeting on this in February. And we've had bi-weekly meetings for the last six months, just going through and developing things and redeveloping concepts and ideas. We've met with all, a lot of the principals and the administrators around the schools, as well as, you know, head of nutrition and transportation and IT and a lot of those groups to get feedback and input on the good, the bad, and the ugly, so to say. So, a lot of that background work is in the full document that we're not presenting here today. We're just going to show you some snippets of a couple of the key tables and so forth for some discussion and input. But we'll start off with this one here, this is the proposed, kind of big list, if you will. This is what gets everybody's attention right up front. This is where the new shiny projects go, as well as the replacement of the older facilities. So, you can see the top two projects, high school 6 and elementary school 18, are of course, they're still listed on here, although high school 6 is currently out to bid, we're expecting those bids to come back in here in the next three weeks. And then the elementary school 18 slash the prototype, if you will, that's currently underway. And then, right from there, you get right into, if you will, the priorities. You can see that we're still recommending elementary school 19 as the top priority. We bumped that a year per the conversations that we've had with the board in terms of coming down and deciding on an actual site that we feel, that everybody feels comfortable with. But it was a, it was a real toss-up, if you will, between how to prioritize that with Drew and Rising Star, because I think as the board knows, there are significant issues at Drew and Rising Star. And they are in significant need of reconstruction. The primary issue is that the timing with Drew and Rising Star to be able to get through the design and construction of that is about a five-year timeline right now. And of course, we're already in design for the elementary school prototype. And so, the, the timing there is reflective of that, that we would look at this point to deliver elementary school 19. If we can select a piece of land in August of 2027, that assumes that we're bidding that out around, let's see, that would be two-year build, so in 2025, or a little before that. I'll get back to you on that date, make sure I didn't screw up my date.
So, what did you say then? As long as we can find a site by next August?
Yes, we would want to make sure that we are, I gotta think about my timeline.
No, we, we would need to have a site in hand by next August.
By next August.
At the latest.
Because we need a year to get through this site plan development.
So, identification of a site should, should happen post haste.
Well, so you have here sites identified, I'm unaware of us having identified sites.
Multiple potential sites identified.
I haven't had that meeting where that's been given.
Maybe we should say sites considered, or.
Say whatever you like, update that.
Those are the ones that we talked, talked with the board about. But Drew and Rising Star, the complication there is obviously, and we've talked a little bit with the board about this, is the way we're looking at building those projects would essentially swap the sites, right? So, you would build Drew at Rising Star and vice versa. And so, you, you need to build the two projects at the same time, which creates a significant financial burden.
Well, it means three schools have to be relocated. And just for clarification, I think I know what it means, cost of wins, what is that?
So, for, basically, if we were to keep Drew, if you will, how much we would need to invest into it to keep it functional?
That's what I thought it meant, I just wanted to be sure.
Unfortunately, you're right.
Honestly, some of these numbers and some of them are vacant, we don't have a lot of information on them, because we, these were originally pulled on items that we had in our 10-year CIP, on the 3R list of items that we had for Drew, that we had for Rising Star. Honestly, the fleet services facility, we would, there's cost avoidance there. You know, we need to expand the current one or do significant renovations to there. So, we could do more work and really dig down deeper in some of those cost avoidances.
Before we give this to the board of supervisors, again, would you like to have that data a little bit more formalized? Because I think they need to understand that it doesn't matter if you replace it, we are still going to have to invest huge sums of money into it to make it functional.
And to make it make sense for them, maybe another term, instead of cost avoidance, maybe cost to keep. Just to make it simple, because that's what it is. It's if we don't fix it, we're gonna, we need to put 40 million into it, right?
But even then, what does that 40 million get us? Because even just getting, but that's exactly it, is like, even now, we're doing emergency repairs that by the time we, even if we had it approved, even if it was the next thing on our list, it takes so long to build a school, we could be dropping hundreds of thousands of dollars just to get through the four years or whatever it takes to go from, you know, approval to opening.
Most definitely.
And that's, you know, painful to think about.
I want to draw everyone's attention, too. We've added a new metric in this year that we're still working with and developing. It's this facility, FCI. Facility, FCI stands for facility condition index. What it is, is basically a measure of what the, obviously what it says, the condition of the facility. Anything over 10% is what I would label a dysfunctional facility. Anything over 20% is in serious need of repairs or renovations. Anything over 30%, you're pretty much to the point where it's, it's, the building should be let go, demolished, and rebuilt.
Can I ask you a question about that? So, when I read a year or two ago, the explanation of the FCI, it seemed to me that the number kind of, it had something to do with the value of the property in terms of just the value of the property. So, if I have a piece of property on Route 1, it's more valuable than a piece of property that I have, no offense, in Hartwood, right? Just because, and, and so, it seemed to me that the FCI, for some properties, is going to undervalue how, how much that facility index. Is that still the case, or has the number changed?
No, and, and so, the, the value of the underlying property itself is not really weighted into this. It's really what it would take to rebuild that facility today. And what we're overlaying that with is, is the amount of items that would otherwise have to be replaced to keep the facility functional. And so, you get a weighted percentage. It's, it's kind of another way of looking at cost avoidance. But it gives you a little bit of a truer idea of, okay, if we're over 10%, there are significant financial investments that need to happen to this facility. If you're over 30%, you're really, you've really gotten to the point where the, the amount of financial investment significantly outweighs the ability to keep the, to keep the facility.
Would you just send us that calculation, the formula?
Sure.
Because my recollection was very much that.
I agree with what we were told before, but I think they're using a different formula. Probably a different place, it's definitely.
You can also improve your facility condition index by making certain repairs that will extend the life of your building, renovations, things of that nature, that will.
But as long as the land value itself is an impact, because I think for us at this table, all of our land is priceless. Which, as we are finding, is hard to get.
The condition of the facility, and it's indexed using a weighted average.
I'm just asking.
But can I ask a question, though? I, I feel like this doesn't, for me, in terms of like the Drew situation, we get the building as falling down, but I don't think this sort of touches on the urgency regarding the health factors for that building, the cockroach infestation, the fact that kids are going to school annually with cockroaches dropping on their food. So, that, yeah, it doesn't reflect the urgency of sort of a now build? Like, how do we fix this? And I know we have the land sort of all mixed and matched and mapped out for how to do this, but I, I don't know that, I mean, 10.4% to me says, okay, the building, like, this cost avoidance is fine, but we're not getting to the real value there of what's actually going on at Drew, so.
Yeah, I want to point out, too, our facility assessment that we did for Drew is already about three years old. So, and those factors, each year you get passed there, it's going up substantially. So, we're getting into a pattern of replacing our facility indexes, assessments on a, like a rotating basis. But we need to update Drew's. When we started the new rotation, it was more recent, and now it's coming back up.
How old is Rising Star and Hartwood on this? If Drew's is 3, what are theirs?
I think that was one of the ones we redid.
Both of them, they're more recent?
Rising Star was, I don't think. Hartwood was a 10 years old as well.
I guess, you know, my question is, that Drew's at an FCI of 10.4, but the cost avoidance is over 40 million, which is almost half the cost of a new school. So, it just doesn't, I'm not quite sure I understand how to make that jive.
Right, now, and I, I think we, I mean, these are, I'm not a statistician. These are, these are numbers and these are points of, for us all to kind of take in to account and say, okay, this facility, we know both from our day-to-day experience at the facility, I was just there yesterday, and from what we're seeing in the facility condition index, that's in this case, three years old, and just the overall function, functional nature of the facility. We look at that comprehensively when we come out to the final ranking, right? So, we're not just saying, well, we're just rating it on FCI, or we're just rating it on cost avoidance or oper, you know, operational conditions at the facility. We, we try to look and weigh all those things comprehensively.
So, I got one more thing to add that might answer your question a little bit, too, is that there may be things that, that impact the facility condition severely that have a lower cost avoidance or a lower cost to correct than, say, other things. Like, an HVAC replacement would have a tremendous impact on the, the quality of the occupant experience in the, in the buildings and also would contribute positively to the facility condition, extremely expensive to, to fix. But there may be something that has something attached to the building envelope or masonry work that, that may have a more negative impact in terms of a percentage that would cost less for us to replace, because it's not a mechanical system.
Can we put the year under this FCI? When it was done.
And can I just say for the record, that I guess my point, too, is that this is sort of like, we can talk about this all day long amongst ourselves, because we all know of urgency for each of these buildings. But it's a sellability point across the street, to me. So, to say the building is in disrepair is one thing, but just like with Hartwood and their happy little family of copperheads that hang out outside, you know, I, for me, the urgency, we got countless emails, or I did anyway, at the end of last school year about the cockroach situation over at Drew. And so, somebody, we have to stop looking at a broken air conditioner system as the highest possible worry that we have in these schools, because some of them, it's not. And I'm not sure it reflects the urgency of doing that.
That's fair, we don't have fuel, cockroach measure.
You should, you should absolutely get a dead cockroach measure.
Cockroach per square foot.
I would also get the algorithm, cockroach ratio to.
We are.
Right, we're.
We have that in here. Why, but why can't we just?
Please stop saying that out loud.
I mean, just, are we, are we destined to have cockroaches forever?
Because cockroaches can survive nuclear holocausts.
Because, you know, some of the, the condition being so old and some of the pipes and everything being so old and damaged
that the points of entry are, are.
Numerous.
Numerous, yes.
Okay, so that, that rises to a higher level, then, if we can't fix it.
And that's the thing, we're asking.
That's, that's so part of the narrative.
We have to sort of stand unbended, or, you know, unbended me in front of the board of supervisors every year and beg for money. It's like, we need it, I mean, like, we want it, we just want money. And that's not the case, like, we're not just asking for new schools. We're asking to provide our children with a fully safe environment, including from health hazards related to cockroaches and everything else. And I don't know how you do a cockroach measure.
Well, just, just to be clear, we actually just had a specialist there yesterday, one of seven in Virginia, come out and, and look, look at this more carefully with his view. We've, we've had a number of treatments out that have been pursued over the years. And so, they're, they're giving us a few recommendations that we're going to attempt and see if we can try to curb it for now. But the ultimate issue is, we believe that there's some abandoned pipes in some areas that we, we cannot locate. We've TB, we've smoke tested, we've done everything we possibly, that we know, technology-wise, to find where they're entering. We can't find them. So, it's just gotten to that point where, where we're going to treat it as best we can, while we try to innovate it as best we can. But aside from beginning to just tear out walls everywhere to try and find these.
That's my point.
That's, that's where we're, that's where we're at.
Abandoned pipes, I just need to make sure my brain understands. So, you're talking about, like, maybe 30 years ago, they decided to do repiping to make it more efficient, but those other pipes were left there because it costs, you know, costs money to rip them out, something like that, right?
And they may have been made at, that may be ceramic pipes versus some building material that we would use that would be a little bit more sturdy and long-lasting.
All right.
Should, should we be thinking about a referendum for Drew and Rising Star?
Well, all four of those, 28.
Yeah, I, that's.
But we can ask.
That's up to the board of supervisors, we can't just on our own.
But, but we can ask, we can ask. I mean, when we, when we have our meeting or when we have our three.
I have a, I don't think we can get it done before the election. I mean, we.
Well, not this year.
Right, so they have to start it up.
It's about a year process to, to do.
And if we need it, we need to add it to the, we need to have the board of supervisors on our side.
Well, that's what I, that's my question is.
So we're going to have to start advocating for it sooner rather than later.
We did last summer and talked.
Is this something we want to talk about with respect to these two schools?
I was gonna say, this is what we talked about last year though.
Yeah, we did. We talked generically about a bond referendum and they gave us something. But if we know these two schools are beyond the scope of what's in their allowance for those years.
It's not two, it's three.
It's, it's four, it's, we're twenty years.
No, I'm. It's, yeah, and it, but all four of these is three hundred million. Well, I'm, but I'm talking specifically about the ones that are down the, the twenty twenty eight. I mean, the twenty seven, if in fact that goes through, in effect, that's been approved.
Yes.
I actually do not think we need a bond referendum for this.
We've got, we've got nineteen.
These are overdue projects that have not snuck up on us, that are emergent needs for the students we serve. And if they are not on board with funding them, you know, responsibly and appropriately, I'm not putting it out to vote so they could, you know, promote or not promote a referendum and have them tell us forever, public doesn't want new Rising Star, we're not paying for it. This has been on our list forever, absolutely forever. If we had an emergency, if we had a fire and the insurance wasn't going to cover it, something, if it was for an extra, like the sports center or whatever, that would be beautiful to have, even the day school, you know, that's, that's something that we would love to have, but we can function without it. We can't function without, with a thirty seven and a half percent with the waitlist we have for our schools that we are required to provide seats for and required to provide education for, with the supervisors that have let us get to have six things on our overdue list.
So I, I think referendum would certainly be a reasonable thing to pursue. I think a lot of it has to do with how do we sell it to the voters, and that would be on us. I'm just skeptical that we can get the board of supervisors, they have to, they have to agree to do it.
Oh, I don't. I mean, as soon as we walked out of our seven-on-seven, that was the first thing that was, you know, nothing said in the room with us. But it was the first thing that was set up on the dais was, you know, talking about putting some of our projects on there.
I just know we've, we've been talking about it since a year and a half.
Oh, well, we, and we, yeah. But we haven't done anything, I mean.
If we do a bond referendum, is the type of borrow different than the bond that they take out to build schools or?
No.
They're essentially the same.
They're, they're essentially the same, and, and I will say that the, the benefits that the county has right now is that they do have two borrowing rates that they can access, which are good. One is within their debt capacity, they could borrow at a triple AAA rating, which is a, a pretty low rating. The second one is that they could borrow at the VPSA rating, which is a double A one rating, I think. A double A or one rating, which is just slightly higher. And they can do that outside of their debt capacity. So, you know, any arguments about debt capacity don't matter. The only question about the, the referendum is whether or not you are getting the voters to direct the supervisors to do it versus the supervisors just doing it because it needs to get done.
Well, can I say something about this? Because I, I think also with the bond, I, I think it's iffy. You, you, we can package it whichever way you want. Doesn't mean people are going to vote for it. It doesn't mean that the board of supervisors will speak to it publicly the same way that we see it. So we don't know what we'll get, and then someone, this is more of a question than a statement, you guys can correct me if I'm wrong. But we've had bonds that passed before and the job still isn't done.
Oh, sure.
So it doesn't mean, just because they vote for a bond, doesn't mean it's going to happen.
Correct.
I agree with Maureen, we need to go back to the board of supervisors every single time and ask them to do their job, which is to fund the school system.
Okay, that's our duty.
And then we have to do our job too.
Yeah, I, I agree, we have to vote smartly, but, but it's their job to fund it.
So the job that we have in front of us to do is, this is our staff recommendation for the CIP for this year. And we have a copied example of the one that we approved for last year. And you can see, obviously, every year we wait is a lot of dollars that compile on here. So we need to, the staff is recommending, and cut me off any time, Jason. Staff is recommending that we keep the nineteen where it is and put the rebuild projects following nineteen.
You know, following capital maintenance projects from the three R list.
What moves Hartwood down.
Yeah, your, your capital maintenance projects from three are always going to remain at the top, so to speak, because they're going to be annually assigned and divided.
So are we annually asking for a hundred and fifty-six million?
Uh, no, that's, that's combined, that's over the ten-year period of your CIP, your, you know.
That's not true at all, yeah.
It's, it's. I, I would, I would suggest that, that if, if it's our, with the board, that Dr. Chase and I try to work some out, a potential alternative. Because, I mean, what, what I'm doing, I'm not saying it's not their job, but clearly it's not getting done. We're, our voices are falling on deaf ears, and what I want to do is explore a potential alternative to perhaps be able to get the funding. Because what we're going to hear in response is, this triple bond rating is very important and it helps the county all over. And because of that, the, the borrow is limited to a certain amount every year. And as Dr. Taylor just said, that a referendum would allow the county to go outside of that debt limit that they have, that, and keep their still, keep their bond rating, but you're right, it would have to be sold, but that's going to be on us.
And it has to also still happen, because if it, unless I'm wrong, we've got things that passed on a bond, I know it was those, these roads, that a board of supervisors told me, still isn't done, and it's been four or five years.
They haven't even made a promise on it.
So, just because the bond vote goes our way, it doesn't mean it's going to happen.
Doesn't mean it's happening.
But yours, we haven't seen a penny.
So, so if we do your way, let's still plan for, for, like, something else, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, I'm just suggesting it's for.
No, no, I'm saying if we do that, we should still plan for the fact that if it goes through and we don't get that school,
Yeah, I want to try something new.
what are we, what is the next thing that we do?
I, I see no way in the world that this is going to be approved based on the triple bond rating and the allowance that they have for each year's borrow.
Right.
So I'm just trying to find a way to, to try to get it done. And I, I think, Dr. Chase, I mean, our first preference would be to have it funded, but if it's not getting funded, and you're right, maybe it's their job, but it's not getting done. So what are we going to do? We have to look at Plan B or C.
Well, let's do B and C.
Well, I think especially since getting a bond would require time. It's not, we can't just ask that and it gets on the, it gets on the election.
And that's, if it passes, if it doesn't pass it, if it doesn't pass, we're worse off than we are now.
If it doesn't pass, it doesn't change our CIP, our CIP's.
It does, it doesn't change our CIP, but it changes the appetite across the street, because they're going to be like, wow.
I don't think the appetite can get any worse across the street.
Well, do you want to tempt fate on that? I certainly don't.
Can I ask a question? Because you and Chris talk and it's like wanting a foreign language occur. So the triple bond rating, I feel like I know, I, I know what it is, but tell me what impacts our triple bond rating, the, the highest and the most have to be at the biggest concern.
Yeah, and how can you manipulate it, right? So how, how do you get more debt capacity is the question? Well, you collect more revenue, so your revenue to debt ratio changes.
Right. Which we have no desire to.
So you, you could increase your revenue, i.e. vis a vis tax collections, and that would also extend your debt capacity. Now, I will say this too, the county can still borrow outside its debt capacity and just accept a higher interest rate if they want to. But they would be accepting a higher interest rate in exchange for borrowing outside of their debt capacity.
And that impacts their rating overall?
Yeah, it would impact their bond rating, it could.
Potentially. Potentially. The more money you owe versus, the more you owe versus what you have coming in affects your rating.
That's right.
So, so nothing else in terms of like, what we're borrowing for, whatever? In other words, like, you know, continuing to hit our head on, like Sisyphus, right? This is what I feel like we are, we are Sisyphus right now.
Correct.
And I don't know.
Been Sisyphus for a while.
Oh, yeah.
Is that, is that going that rock up the hill?
But we've been pushing.
The rock up the hill and it slows back down when it gets, this is the top, this is the, this is the top.
Yeah.
This is Sisyphus.
Yes, correct.
Kill, got it.
So we, I don't, I mean, so, so it doesn't have anything to do based on, you know, county, how the county's building itself in terms of like, the school systems and surrounding its, its potential to bring, um, new homeowners and communities and people here, that to me would speak volumes as well, right? Or that has nothing to do.
Yeah, no, it, it does, it's, it's connected too, because I, I will say that a lot of communities find like this great balance of finding a rate that works plus growth. And so they are able to meet growing demand because their revenue goes up based on growth, not necessarily based on manipulation of the tax rate. So to, to your point, we've been kind of like the beneficiaries of only doing one construction project of any magnitude since two thousand eight, and that was the Moncur rebuild.
Right.
And the rest of the time, we just took a break from rolling the rock up the hill, okay?
Which is part of the deal.
And as a result of that, we've celebrated the fact that we've got this great bond rating, but we're not using it. And so there, there has been capacity in, in, in their debt capacity for a while. And I think that there is some trepidation now that everything is kind of built up and like, you know, push has come to shove and these projects need to get done, and it's scrambling to fight over which emergency project is more emergency than the other projects, which they're all need to get done. So I think that that is your challenge, is one, coming to some type of agreement with the board of supervisors as to what you can afford. And then two, deciding which emergency project is more emergency than the next one.
Well, and I would add three to that, I would like to start seeing them get a little bit more creative with adding revenue streams to this county that aren't taxpayer-based. But I'm, I'm this close to giving up on that hope, that hope.
So I think, just to kind of re-center around this list for a minute, I think if, if we could get some input from the board on the current prioritization that we're showing on this, and then I want to touch through the rebuilds and the HVAC a little bit.
Could, could we get a timeline that, for us, about when we need to make decisions on certain things in order to stay on the calendar?
Yeah, we do that. We'll make it in a bulletin if that's our.
It doesn't, yeah, then you can go in the bulletin, it's just that it would be helpful if I knew what our deadlines were.
Like, no words like post haste, like.
In order to meet the, to meet the FY twenty-seven open day, we need to make this decision by year.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, yeah, like, give us a month.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's the timelines I was telling you, doesn't work really well for us.
Yeah.
Yep, we can do that.
Yeah.
We'll do that now.
Thank you.
So, so is anybody object to Dr. Chase and I in our free time considering this?
Yeah.
We're not.
No, no, I mean, you, if, if you're interested, you're the only one that.
Well, no, I'm, I'm interested, but I don't think it will happen, but yeah, I'm interested.
Oh, well.
It just, because given that we can't do it, the other board has to do it. And we're not in the best relationship with the other board at this moment in time, I worry about.
We have to propose, if we don't propose, it'll never even be considered. That, that's my only, how could we?
Yeah, sure, sure. Sure. My only question, just to. Right.
Make a question.
It's, it's got.
All right, so.
So, I want, just to come back to Dr. Warner's question. We do have this on, on your board agenda for next month to approve a draft and across the street. So we would like to be able to, to get some consensus on.
Where are we, verse eighteen, verse, or nineteen versus the priorities?
The prioritization that we're showing here, correct?
I just think that e- even to replace Drew and Rising Star, we need the capacity, so we, we have to move students around if we can. And we don't have the capacity to do that right now. So, so to me, this makes sense, that we need the seats before we need anything else.
But see, here's a question I have too, and Lionel sent something to me about this. Is I said, what are you going to do with the trailers at the schools completion of the elementaries? And he said, move to the middle schools because we're going to need seats in the middle schools. To me, rather than move trailers, if we did the middle school, we wouldn't be moving trailers, we would keep them where they are. And we paid a lot of money and we have a lot of time invested in where they are, to not have to pick them up and move them to another place and pay for that too.
But, and. But they're full, so they're being used.
Right.
So we can't move students anywhere, we don't have any place to move them.
Right.
So there's actually a lot of thoughts with the trailers, and we have, Lionel has thoughts, we have thoughts, and we think that there's likely more, more modulars coming next year.
We are, yeah, yes.
Denied.
We saw that.
Three. Denied.
So, one of, one of the thoughts we've had, and I'll, I'll touch base on this in a minute, is that as you'll see down in the HVAC renovations, I'll just scan down there real quick. What we've, what we've done here, so I, I think everybody's familiar with the three R list that we have every, every year, and we still have that.
Right.
But if, if you talk about Sisyphus rolling a rock up a hill, every year with the six to seven million that we would get there, we could handle one, maybe a portion of a project. And so it has become essentially, in our opinion, fairly untenable to continue to do these HVAC renovations in this method and manner. We think that it would be better, more cost-effective if we pulled those various projects that are scattered throughout the three R list over the next five years, ten, ten, five to ten years, and pulled them into larger renovation projects. So for example, Brookpoint Stafford Middle School, instead of doing that HVAC renovation project in three to four phases over five to six years, pull a wing of the school offline, use a, a portion of the trailers out there to go ahead and relocate the classes temporarily for a year out to the trailers. Take that wing of the school offline, do a full rebuild of that section. Get all of your HVAC completed, electrical, plumbing, flooring, ceiling tile, everything all done in one, one movement. It, it adds a lot of efficiency in terms of time, in terms of cost. But the other thing that this does is we bring these piecemeal renovations over, if you will, to the larger CIP list. Really draws attention to the fact that there's a lot of hidden costs sitting back in that three R list that aren't really visible in that six to seven million dollars here that we're, that we're trying to get through. And so the, the thought that we proposed here is that we bring that forward out into the light, if you will, and put these as large HVAC renovation projects right on the list and fund them as larger projects.
Quick question, I'm just distracted. So Brookpoint, it says it has an FCI of eleven point eight percent.
Correct.
So why are we going to talk about spending twenty million dollars on it? Why don't we move it right over here in with the Drew middle and the public?
So, good, good news, actually, and this is gonna, this is not going to go down great for the handful of people who were a part of the opening group of Brookpoint as faculty. But Brookpoint is nearing the halfway mark of its useful life, and so it, it is going to need some work to stay online. What Mr. Towery is proposing is like, how, how might we extend the useful life of some of the buildings that we've got?
I'm just asking about the meaningfulness of this FCI. It's, Brook is, is got a, is an eleven point eight and Drew is a ten point four.
Because. Yeah, because you can make modifications at, at a dollar figure that will improve the facility condition index for a substantial period of time. But whereas you've got Drew, we could make improvements and we may not see any headway in terms of moving the needle on the facility condition.
And this number is not particularly useful.
Well, we know that, because it's three years, it's three years old, it's got to be at least double.
Well, on.
If you do that, I would be shocked if you did Drew today and it wasn't over twenty.
Let me, let me, let me.
But he also said that this isn't the only thing that prioritizes things. It, that it's just one piece of a comprehensive, so that's why it has a.
But, but, I'm sorry. But this is also as a result, correct me if I'm wrong, of the fact that our buildings are so stressed to the bone with students because we don't have enough places for them, that, I mean, the.
It's a factor.
The argument makes itself though, I mean, the wear and tear on the building, right, by surplus of individuals having no other school to go to.
Well, and also not keeping up with our maintenance schedule.
So let me, let me just talk again about the FCI, and Dr. Chase, you bring up a great point. So the FCI, the facility condition index can go up, obviously, if you continue to let things, if you continue to defer maintenance or replacements of various HVAC systems, flooring, you know, plumbing, all of, all of those things. Or you can reverse that trend by going in and doing a renovation and bring that facility condition index back down to at or near zero. So an example of this is actually in the table right above, you can see the, the rebuild priorities, which we've broken out separately here as well. The facility condition index on a lot of these is, is lower at the moment, Stafford, Falmouth and Grafton as an example, because we just did, just did significant renovations in there within the past five to ten years. Now, if you were to project that forward five to ten years, you would see that FCI continue to creep up significantly and sharply.
Correct, right now, not ten years from now, what that school is going to look like.
So what was North Stafford's FCI before the?
We did mechanical upgrades and other exterior improvements.
Do you happen to know what that number?
Not, not off the top.
We can go to our most recent.
But, but as these buildings continue to age, the slope at which their, their FCI increases will start to get steeper and steeper. And this is a, a great point and a great kind of crossroads to point out that we did add some projects that we're recommending the board consider. And we've. Um, and we've reordered a couple too. On the top list, the North Star addition. As we continue to see growth in our pre-K programs, that concentration is in the northern part of the county. And it lessens southern part of the county.
Everybody north, everybody south who's six, 10 can't even get to North Star.
Correct. So, so that, that's, that's a significant issue in terms of, of how we have our, our pre-K programs allocated. And so adding capacity to that space makes a lot of sense. The, the portfolio of Ferry Farms, Stafford L, Falmouth and Grafton Village, by the time these are sequenced in the CIP, they will be nearing their sixty-fifth year of operation. And even though they recently received renovate, recently, in quotes, recently, within a five to 10 year window, we have to start thinking about what those buildings are going to be like 10 years from now and, and what that might look like. Similarly, one of the things that we visibly removed from your top list, and painfully so, because North Stafford High School desperately needs an adequate expansion to its, its performing arts space. The reality is you have now reached the point where the investment in North Stafford needs to be managed a little bit more closely because you should be considering what a replacement of North Stafford should look like. And is it throwing good money after bad to, to have a, a fine arts addition? When the reality is, is that your facility condition for North Stafford is about to start to get really bad over the next couple of years.
So can I ask a question? Why is North Stafford so far down the list on rebuilds? Wouldn't it be moved up maybe?
Potentially. But, but where we are right now, we know that this is within the foreseeable future. So if, if, uh, if we know that it's in the foreseeable future, we want to account for it since we started reporting when things first appeared on the CIP as a, as a column that we report to the supervisors. We want to make sure that future boards of supervisors in the two thousand, late two thousand thirties are well aware of the fact that we brought this to the board of supervisors' attention all the way back in two thousand twenty-four, when this was adopted. So.
Okay. Can I ask another one? I also have a question. So you were saying how you, to like do maintenance with the HVAC and everything in Brookpoint specifically, that you were planning on having like mobile units, trailers. One, where would we get the trailers from? Would we take that from like other elementary schools and middle schools and repurpose them? Okay. And then two, would that, instead of doing it in multiple phases and do it all one fell swoop, we could do that over summer where the students are there instead of making it really hectic?
Yeah, no, great question. So in terms of the, in terms of the modulars, that's, that's what I was referring to earlier. We have, we have ideas on how to reuse and reuse those modulars potentially. That's interesting. So yes, so we, we bought the 26 modular units that are now installed and up and operational at the elementary schools. The hope would be that if we can get through some of the elementary new constructions in the next three to four years, that those modulars could then be repurposed and reused for some of the renovation projects, right? Or potentially a middle school if needed. The question about the summer, that's how we're currently doing this. And it is, it has, a lot of these projects, you, you only have a limited 10 to 12 week window to get in there. And it becomes very, very difficult, if not almost impossible at times, to do what makes sense in a phased renovation over that, over that time period. It's, it's, there's too much work that would need to occur and in that 10 to 12 weeks. It, it becomes too piecemeal around the facilities. And so, and then what you can get done, you're almost coming back the next summer and undoing part of it to get to the other stuff that you didn't have time to get done the previous summer. So the idea with, with pulling these together into larger comprehensive projects and taking a wing or a floor of a school off, off at one at a time, right, would be to give us the ability to work throughout the calendar year to then get in there, do all the HVAC, plumbing, electrical work, life safety, floors, walls, ceilings. We're not talking about, I don't want anybody to think that we're talking about like a renovation where it's going to look, you know, new and modern all of a sudden. I mean, we'll put new paint back, right? But the, the core of the building is still going to remain the same. We're just going through and replacing the systems that are 25, 30 years old that are at or have exceeded their life expectancy.
So you're talking about a trailer campus for three years there?
It would likely be, it, it, it would depend. So each school, so a high school is going to take longer to get through than a middle school, as an example. So we would, we would phase it over the course of one to three years, depending on the extent of the renovation used in the school. And then you would take a wing or a floor off one at a time. We would have to obviously plan that out in some detail.
And there'd be cost, there'd be cost savings doing it that way.
Correct. Because right now, we're taking, we're doing the same stuff basically, but we're doing it in little fragments and doing this little section, we're trying to do it in a, in a three, two and a half month period. We literally have contractors. The day after school lets out, they're on site the next day and they're starting work up until-
Sometimes for four schools let out, you're doing batch events and doing the same stuff.
I mean, Ferry Farm, we were doing work at Ferry Farm.
So I have a question. So what you're talking about is you're taking this line item and you're looking through this and then you're going, okay, we can match it up with this line item and this one. Your sense of, ostensibly just shortening this so that we are doing things much more coarse in front of the car.
Yeah, and, and part of that is, you know, we've been doing this three R list every year and we haven't gotten another, like, we've gotten a few pennies more each year, you know, thrown at it whenever there's a couple bucks left over. And it's vastly, just greatly underfunded. And so in order to try to-
Yeah, they seem to be depressing lists, to be record.
So like we've always said, we need eighteen to twenty million dollars per year to maintain, if we were called up, but we are years behind on the three R list. So we almost need to do everything on this new large capital list to catch us up. And then we need twenty million dollars a year to maintain it.
So what you can see when you begin backing out the HVAC projects, and we also took out the major paving projects, right? Because there's, there's some significant paving issues around, around the division that need to be taken care of. Not Ferry Farm anymore, thankfully. But what you can see now is this what the, this is what the three R list would begin to look like now without those large projects hanging in, taking, eating up all of the costs. So now you can get to the point where you can go in and do, you know, replacement of a, a fire alarm system or a small interior finish renovation or, um, you know, replace the walk-in freezers or fridges. Those are what are truly three R types of issues. They're not large capital issues. That's where we can actually start to make better use of that funding every year and start making an impact out in the school.
So just a, a quick question. I don't know if this can be quantified, but I know that we look at inflationary pressures on these three Rs and how they, they increase over time. Can we put a value on the cost of delaying these items based on the structure? So does it, if we don't fix this, then this problem gets worse and it becomes, you know, it becomes a more expensive fix because now we have to do these things too. Is there a way to quantify that? Or is that just way too complicated because it's unknown unknowns?
No, it would be, it would be a model. It would be difficult and it wouldn't have as, as high a fidelity.
Right.
But it, it would be a model that we'd have to create or affect.
Like if we don't replace the roof, then the flooring needs to be replaced. I mean, it's just, you know, there's, there's this cascade effect. If you don't fix this, then-
Then this.
It would be hard to communicate it in a, in a, in a format that would-
Then these things happen. But it would be hard to communicate it and quantify it probably.
So then I have a question, just looking at this and in terms of presenting all of these things across the street. I mean, we remember when we sat here and we looked at how they went through their things and their safety ratings and how they prioritize their stuff. And there was this big long document attached to it.
TRC?
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that.
It's just they're not doing it here.
Well, I, I, I mean, yay for them, but here's my thing. Like, there's a whole bunch of different, sorry, there's a whole bunch of different. Promised myself I'd censor. But is there a way to kind of show them like, hey, this is what we're asking for, but just go back to Drew and the cockroach problem. Like, these are the problems we can handle within our school system, but our remedy for that is 10% because exterior to the school building, we rely on you for A, B, C, or D, and that's not being done. And I don't know how that gets presented, but I think it would help us immensely to show we're not just asking for building replacements. We have real safety and security concerns that we cannot logically fix to control that environment, to keep it healthy for our kids. And, and so money is one thing. This alone, to me, this is, you know, sticker shock for anybody, right? But I, I don't know that they understand the pervasiveness of the issues and why we're asking for this stuff. And I can have all the conversations in the world and I've had a few of them with my counterpart. But I don't, I don't know that without them physically sitting in a lunchroom and Drew and having a cockroach drop on their head that they understand that this is really where we are. And I'm only using that as an example because it was, you know, last year's. And I do know you guys told me that there's stuff going on outside that building the county has to fix. But if it's not a cost effective option for the county to fix because of the 30-year-old pipe situation, then we are, we are literally, I'm just keeping using analogies, hamsters in a wheel. And it's frustrating.
Yeah. So I think, and you bring up a good point about how do we, I mean, this is really a communication point, right? And, and in many ways, what we're trying to do here is communicate with the board of supervisors and ultimately the public where the needs are and, and what's really going on. And that, that was a big reason why this year we, we brought out these HVAC and paving issues as an example because it was, it was hidden, if you will, in the three R list. And it was so buried down in there. And you, it was just like, well, we're never going to get through the three R stuff. Well, that kind of becomes a problem at a certain point. Like Stafford Middle, I mean, you were down to, I think the Chilvers were down to 30% efficiency the other day.
Awesome.
You know, so that's not something you want
Right.
in, in the heat of August or September around you, right? So, and those are the types of issues though that have continued to unfortunately lag because we just haven't been funded to get to them, right? So the answer now has to be, we have to have a more significant major intervention in a school like that where we're going in and we're taking something offline. The question's about, you know, FCI index and cost avoidance. I think we can go back and take some time here over the next couple of weeks to try and better develop that. And we can also put in some graphics. I think we've got some good graphics that we've shown, like the CIP advisory committee, where you can see how the FCI condition index continues to increase, you know, as you don't do things. Okay, so year one, you don't do this, it's here. Then year two, it's here. Then, then it's here. And you can see in five years, if we don't do this, our FCI is not going to be at eleven point eight. It's going to be at 20, right?
I think it would be helpful if we had, like, especially with items that are current on the CIP, having, you know, I know you do them in rotation, the, the FCI values, but it would be helpful if they were current when we see them in the CIP.
Yeah, we're, that's, we're trying to get that rotation back because we had some that were 10, 15 years old. And so we just started in there 15, 20 K a pop. So we were trying to kind of budget them out so that we can, every five years have, have clean ones where they're all done in like a five-year period or like a two-year period when we get to that five years. But we're kind of gradually getting there.
So I guess what we need to decide then, ladies, is to just, are we comfortable with the proposed, and we still have another month to have conversations, if we don't have another work session, we can totally do that. But I'm just curious where everybody's comfort is with the proposed CIP. Going?
I have a lot of concern. I feel like we're going to need more conversations, especially regarding, you know, whatever word we're going to use about the sites for Elementary 19, what the status of that is before I could ever, you know, make a discussion or a decision on that. That's probably the big outlier of information.
The biggest, that's 19 location.
And then the feasibility of, on top of that, or alongside of that, the feasibility of the shuffling of the schools. For Drew, there's pros and cons of how that, you know, how that juggling of sites will work or reusing of sites, that it's actually workable. Workable, especially because we hope it will be, we're planning on it will be, but if something happens, that might, that would certainly impact my decision.
Okay. And I'm curious too, Ms. Hilly and I were talking about public day school sites identified. We'd love to know more about that. Dr. Chase?
Yeah, no, I, you know, I, I can't support it, but that's okay.
What would you like to say?
Well, I mean, for me, it's, it's, this sites identified, I mean, I haven't had, you know, I'm not going to, if, if we're having to condemn property in order to get property, it's going to take more than a year to make that happen, as we saw with the high school. So that's an issue for me. I'm concerned about this capital maintenance projects being put in here and the reaction. And I have to tell you, Ferry Farm Elementary School rebuild before Stafford or Falmouth or Grafton, when they had their renovations many years earlier and, and there are more students who live close to these schools than to Ferry Farm. So for me, that's not going to be a goal, but yeah.
Okay. Dr. Warner?
I've said for the last two years that we need three schools yesterday and that position has not changed. I think that we are losing grasp of elementary school 19 with not having a site selected. I'm concerned about the time it takes to get property when we try to acquire it because it seems to always take longer than it should. We are already six months from the approval and we are no closer to having that school. The, there are complications with Drew and Rising Star in the day school because we are going to have to find sites for all those students that we try to build Drew where Rising Star is, which makes a lot of sense. But we have to, we have to accommodate all those students. I like the idea of having the large capital projects because I think it makes sense when you have a 20 million dollar HVAC system that has to be replaced. And I also just know from being in schools, schools operate pretty much year round between summer school and other things. And it's very disruptive when you have work crews in there trying to work around students and faculty. So I like the idea of the three R project, especially with the high schools. And I think it would be less disruptive to have students staying at Brookpoint than having to be moved to someplace else. I also am uncomfortable with Ferry Farm being at the top of the, the rebuild priorities, given, given the fact that Stafford Elementary has such huge, has a much bigger student population, has been under much more stress. And I, and I wonder about North Stafford High School. I think a lot of this depends, I think having the FCI will help and knowing kind of where those stand. And I think that being able to see how it's changed over time a little bit would also be helpful in showing that these maintenance projects have a negative impact on the value of our system. So.
At what rate?
So I mean, other than that, you know, I, I wish we had Elementary School 19 in line with 18 and we were doing this. So I can live with the CIP the way it is. I just think that we have, we have burned some bridges across the street that we are going to have to fix.
Ms. Guy?
I'm, I'm fine with this the way it is. I trust staff's recommendation. But I would say about Ferry Farm being in front of the other ones, that's just confusing to me. But I'm sure there's like a couple of paragraphs that be explained to me as to the why. Or maybe we do need to readdress that. But everything else, I see the logic and I agree.
Okay. Ms. Holstead?
Um, so I think I want to refrain from really committing to anything one way or the other on this one just because I have some global concerns about the health value of schools.
As a consideration as well?
As a consideration. And I think that if we're, if we're putting our students into a building that we know have the potential to harm them from a health perspective, that, that should be given due consideration as well. I also don't appreciate feeling like we're being held hostage for every little, like every little nibble and crumb that we get from across the street. So I'd like to see if there's any conversation they'd like to help have about land availability and, and working with us and supporting the schools and acquiring land. Cause I've not heard that conversation ever be approached to us. And I think that's, that at face value shows us sort of their priorities for the schools.
Right.
So I'm not ready one way or the other until I see more, but I, I feel more pulled towards my concerns with the, the status of the things at Drew, at, at University, at Drew Middle.
Okay. Girls, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I guess a lot of what everyone else has said is essentially what I'll reiterate. So I agree, I know Dr. Chase mentioned that really stuck out to me. We need to reevaluate our priorities when it comes to the properties in line for rebuild. Ferry Farm, which recently underwent renovations, is now at the top of the list. One, schools with significantly higher populations have not recently undergone renovations are placed to lower. So I find that concerning. And I know Ms. Holstead mentioned that there is likely a reason for that that's not listed here. So I would be interested in hearing that, but I do agree with those who have said that we may need to reconsider our priorities when it comes to rebuild. Also as to the FCI, I do find it really interesting and helpful. So I'm not sure if I just missed this, but I was wondering if it does take into account, I think maybe Ms. Holstead has mentioned this, health factors that arise as a result of- I think maybe Ms. Holstead has mentioned health factors that arise as a result of faulty or failing implements in the school. So I wasn't sure if that was factored in here anywhere, if I just missed that, or if that's in the FCI at all.
Kate, can you restate the question again, just about how, just from what you understand?
No, just essentially how, does the FCI take into account failing?
Oh, yeah.
School properties, right?
Yes.
But does that take into account how that affects health in any way?
So the, the FCI is really, what, let's just talk about the facility assessment process for just a minute. So we have a third-party group of professionals that come in, they walk all of, all of the facility, they go in, they look at the HVAC systems, the boilers, chillers, the popping ceiling tiles to look and see what's going on, cataloging age of infrastructure and so forth, and then they're doing their best visually, right, to give their opinion of what the value of that specific asset is, be it a boiler, a chiller, whatever it is, and when it needs to be replaced, okay? What the cost of that is going to be to replace it. They're not necessarily able to say whether or not there's an immediate health impact to that, but will say, right, that if an HVAC system isn't functioning properly or, you know, we're not able to keep adequate temps at the school, things of that nature, that obviously becomes a health and safety issue.
Okay. Two of it's taken into account.
If there's a.
Correct, but we, we also look at that just frankly more objectively from saying,
hey, we've got a fire alarm system here that's at the end of life. That's a safety issue, right? So versus, you know. So does that.
It claimed to life, it was in the 1950s.
Does that help?
Yes, that helps.
A little bit, okay. And I, I can address real quick if, on, just on the Berry Farm.
Can I, can I let everybody finish first?
Okay, I've got a few just things that come to my attention. First is the fine arts wing at North Stafford. We've identified that for years, that that is a need, that that is something that North Stafford does not have, that every other school has, particularly when we did the renovations in the other schools, we did a lot for the arts. North didn't get those renovations because they already had additional student capacity. And I'm not comfortable saying, well, we're going to put the rebuild on for 14 years later than we had originally talked about, you know, needing this or being able to afford really because we needed it for years, the fine arts wing at North. So that's something I, you know, I need some kind of justification for that, because that means there's going to be, you know, many generations of students that will be disadvantaged because they're assigned to North because they don't have the fine arts. And that, and then we all know that's a very important element of education for many of our students. So that's, that's probably my number one. I'm concerned about Hartwood moving, now, it doesn't sound much from number five to number eight, but if I'm just doing this math roughly, it means that Hartwood is going to be behind nearly $224 million worth of construction funding, which means it's realistically not going to happen when we expect it to, because, you know, Hartwood has always been way up there, and I know Ms. Holstead was, was very balanced when she, you know, recognized, you know, these, these other needs to go ahead of it. But now that we're putting, you know, the, and not saying we shouldn't, but, but Drew, Rising Star, and the public day school, you know, in between, that, that concerns me in terms of priorities. The elementary school rebuilds, I would be more comfortable in saying between the years 2032 and 2034, we will have to rebuild these schools, that as time moves forward, we will identify, you know, the priority of each. And the reason for that is it's so far away. Part of it's going to be condition of the buildings, but part is also going to be the need for the seats. And, and availability of land, because I know when we did the renovation to Falmouth, we couldn't add classrooms because there wasn't land there. I don't know where you're going to climb land in Falmouth, but, you know, that'll be, that'll be for another day. But, you know, if we, if, then we wouldn't have to have this discussion that is so esoteric because it's, you know, eight to 10 years from now about who's going to go first.
Well, and those buildings could change too, so.
Right. It's a lot of factors. But if we identify it as a need for this period of time, it's, it's in the future, and it'll be basically a, a place, a place marker. And Ms. Holstead, we did have a joint land acquisition committee with, it was with the, with the supervisors, the school board, and I think there were community members on that as well, and somehow it must have just passed away.
We, we still have a joint land acquisition committee, it's made up of staff members of.
Right, but we had one before that was more than just staff. I think they even had some committee, and it, and if we could look into that, but maybe we need to propose that it needs to be, you know, moved to a higher level. And not just have, you know, our counterparts in us, but let's get some community involvement, you know, in that as well, because I think that'll go to your, your, your selling, you know, points for, for part of this. That's enough for now.
Okay. For me, I would say, you know, one of the things that I wanted to do specifically was making sure that upon approval, that we have land identified, and I still feel that's real, I, I mean, we see, you know, that we have site identified, but I, you know, it's not an approved identified site by this board, so I was kind of, again, I want to make sure that we're final on that. I also agree that the order of pushing Hartwood is, is a little concerning to me. I just don't think that it, you know, that's right there in 2028, we have $300 million in projects that we would like to have open, and I think that's a hefty lift. And the, you know, the, and I have to say too, where we have as Hartwood is a rebuild in 2017, actually, it was identified almost, I think it was 2009.
As a re.
As a rebuild.
As a renovation.
Renovation, okay.
Yeah.
Well, because I remember it was in my CIP group's information that we, we identified that, because whatever the order with the elementaries, Hartwood was to follow, and it didn't do, it didn't happen that way. Well, of course, Berry Farm's still working on theirs. But, and I, I also would like to look at the elementary school projects. Of course, we know this is a living document, so things move and change, but I definitely, you know, one of the things that we're identifying with these elementary schools is the need for seats. And, you know, Stafford L. and Falmouth both have trailers, and I understand Falmouth will be, you know, we might have to take an elementary design and make it different for them. Or like, you know, we've, we're looking at a three-story model, it may be something that we can do on that site particularly, I don't know. But anyway, I would like to just have a pause on that for priorities, just because facility condition, I, I understand about Berry Farm where it is and, and the condition of the renovation that was done on it and everything, I do. But Grafton was the last of the renovation of the three, and that was finished in 2014, I believe, is when they finished. So I, that's how I kind of see these. And I don't have a problem with the three R projects. I'm a little concerned about how it's going to impact taking a wing offline into school and moving kids outside in the high school where they do change classes. It's not like sitting in a room all day, going inside, going to the bathroom, coming back out. It's not that, it's a lot more of a outdoor campus and, you know, I've some safety, a lot of safety concerns about that.
They did that at Stafford and they did that at Forge, so both.
Yeah. But not in, like, I mean, they only had like a couple of trailers, not a wing worth of trailers.
This really does seem like a more efficient way to do these major renovation projects, though.
I, I don't, I, I sort of see yes and no, what's it going to fit, how is it going to affect student life? Like, I can see it from the building perspective, but from the student life, I just agree with that.
I went to school with a trailer in Arlington.
No, no, I'm not talking about the trailer, I'm talking about while the school, because I know, like, when my kid was in Stafford High School, and they were building it in the back, and they were, had the building in the front, there was a lot of issues with that.
I, I mean, I, I know there's a lot of moving parts.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is, if, if done right, it wasn't seamless, I mean, we were outside, it was raining, you know, it got a little bit wet.
Yeah.
But it, it, it did make sense, and.
Yeah.
There's a way that I think we can do it to make it work. I know it worked for me in middle school for the time that we had to have it while we were getting other things fixed, because in Arlington, we fixed them completely.
Yeah.
But, you know.
Yeah.
What are the.
It's not ideal.
And I do have some questions about some three R projects, like, why are they on there?
Okay.
But I can talk to you later about that.
Okay, yeah.
And we do need to get dinner done here soon, too.
Okay. We've got a lot of great feedback here.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll come back.
So should we set another work session then to finalize this and for our meeting in September?
Yeah, it is in September. And, and actually, we don't have to finalize it till October, so we have two meetings. So there's a work session in September slated and October.
But we're concerned about, like, even, you know, even the top projects and, you know, saying sites identified and that's not been decided, so we want to make sure that we do that. So, all right?
Let's adjourn. Oh, I, I will say, the rest of the agenda items, we talked in this, the self, school board annual self-evaluation. Dr. Warner, Ms. Holstead, and myself in governance said that we feel like either with new board members, old board members, combination, or whatever, this would be something that we could do better at a retreat. So we kind of wanted to push it off to that. If anyone, if anyone has an issue, no?
Don't talk about me, dang it.
You know, we're also, if you people have specific things they would like discussed at the retreat, you would be nice and start giving them to missing.
Yep.
Think about next week.
Okay. We will begin with our pledge allegiance. If everyone would please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Ms. Hall, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Chase?
Here.
Ms. Buckman?
Here.
Ms. Guy?
Here.
Ms. Holstead?
Here.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Ms. Sigmund?
Here.
Ms. Solomon?
Here.
And Dr. Warner?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Could I ha, we have no one participating electronically. Can I get, Dr. Chase, would you do the approval of the agenda, please?
Yes, I would make a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment that item, that, I'm looking for the minutes, that the minutes from the June 13th, 2023 meeting be pulled and then brought back to us at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other changes, or anybody have any comments, questions, or concerns? Okay. If you all would cast your vote. Did you cast?
Oh, my goodness.
Dr. Warner, did you cast?
Oh, I did. Sorry.
Okay. Okay, tally the vote. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Moving on to announcements of administrative personnel appointments.
Don't we have to approve the consent agenda first?
Consent agenda, sorry.
Motion to approve.
Consent agenda has amended.
Okay. All right, all of, okay, I got a first, I got a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns about the consent items? Okay. All those in favor, cast your votes. Well, whether you are or not, cast your votes. Tally the votes, motion passes unanimously. Okay, Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a few administrative appointments to announce this evening, very excited. As I call your name, if you could make your way down to the podium up front and offer a greeting when I'm done with your announcement. First is Lisa Almond. Ms. Almond will join the North Nation team as the new assistant principal at North Stafford High School. Ms. Almond joins us from Chesterfield County, where she recently served as the dean of students at Meadowbrook High School. In this role, she has supported both instructional and operational work, ranging from leading a lesson plan model redesign to serving as the school's transportation coordinator. Prior to her role, Ms. Almond served in a variety of instructional leadership roles in Charles City, Charles City Public Schools, including the alternative education building coordinator and the summer school coordinator, and has worked as a social studies teacher and a professional learning facility facilitator at multiple sites. Ms. Almond earned her Bachelor's of Arts degree in religion and Bachelor of Science in political science from Barton College in North Carolina, and her Master of Educational Leadership from Cambridge College. Ms. Almond, welcome to Stafford County and North Nation.
Thank you.
You just want to say hi?
I want to say it's an honor, and I look forward to improving my leadership skills and making a difference in Stafford County public schools. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Oh, not so fast, not so fast. I see that you brought your new principal with you this evening. Is there anyone else that you brought in the audience that you'd like to introduce?
Yes, I do. I brought my close friend, Terrence Butcher. He's with me. And my mom, my family, they're on, watching on the website because we live so far. You know, my parents, my family lives in Hampton Roads, so they're here with me in spirit, but I'm so honored, and I'm thankful to have this opportunity.
Thank you, and welcome to Stafford County.
Thank you, thank you.
Our next appointee is our new director of finance and budgets, and this is an internal appointee, Ms. Lisa Gamar. Please come forward. Ms. Gamar has served as the assistant director of financial reporting for the department since 2017. In her role, she developed new systems to track capital assets and improve the quality and turnaround time of our annual comprehensive financial report, ensuring efficient use of public resources. Prior to joining Stafford Schools, Ms. Gamar served in a supervisory roles, several supervisory roles in accounting and budget in the nonprofit sector, including her work for the Marine Corps Community Services and action in community through service at Prince William, also known as AXS. Ms. Gamar is a certified public accountant and earned her Bachelor of Science in Accounting Information Systems from Virginia Tech. And I should also point out that she is a national champion. She was the national champion for FBLA when she was in high school. Congratulations, Ms. Gamar.
Thank you. So like Dr. Taylor said, I have been passionate about accounting for a long time. I did place first in the nation in the FBLA competition for accounting between my senior year of high school and my freshman year in college, so that was my 15 minutes of fame. I like to tell people that I come to work to solve number puzzles. I just, I solve number puzzles all day long, and my goal is to provide the best information I can to the people who are making decisions on behalf of Stafford Schools. So thank you for this opportunity to expand what I do to include the budget, and I look forward to learning a lot of new stuff.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Lisa, did you bring anybody with you?
I did not.
Okay, well, well, thank you for being here, and thank you for being a part of Team Stafford. We really appreciate you. Next up is a new addition to our team, Ms. Robyn Britton, who will join our team as the new assistant director of special education supporting high schools. Ms. Britton comes to us from Prince William County Public Schools, where for the last 11 years, she has worked as an administrative coordinator in special education. In that role, she led professional learning for special educators across the division, oversaw training and alternative assessments for special learners, and provided coaching and positive behavioral intervention and supports. Prior to her central department work, Ms. Britton was a special education teacher and department chair at both the middle and high school levels. Ms. Britton earned her Bachelor of Arts in Psychology from York College in New York, and her Master of Education in Educational Leadership from the University of Mary Washington. Welcome to Team Stafford, Ms. Britton.
Thank you. First of all, I just want to say it's an honor and privilege to be a part of the division. I wanted to share, Dr. Taylor, I saw you this morning on the news, and it was very inspirational, and as you shared information about the new initiatives and a wonderful opportunity. opportunities for our students. So I'm very excited to be a part of this, and I support your mission, and I look forward to working with all of the stakeholders in my new role as an Assistant Director.
Thank you. Robin, I know you've got a ton of teammates that are here tonight, but is there anyone else that you'd like to introduce this evening?
Yes, my husband, who's been wonderful and supportive for me, Larry.
Thank you for sharing her time and talents with us. We plan to overextend ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, once again.
Thank you so much. Before we announce our last appointment for this evening, I should note that our new Executive Director for Transportation Services was appointed this evening. He couldn't join us tonight, but we are looking forward to welcoming Mr. Johnson to the team, and we'll do a formal introduction of Mr. Johnson at the next school board meeting when he's fully on board. The transportation team also received an email today announcing Mr. Johnson, and we look forward to having him join us soon. But we also have another appointment to announce in our Transportation Services Department, and we're very excited about this. Bridging the gap between what happens in our operational space and what happens in our schools is really important to Team Stafford and to this community. And it's with great pleasure that we announced that Mr. Benjamin Diggs will assume the new position as Assistant Director of Transportation Services. Mr. Diggs, come on up. Mr. Diggs brought a cheering section, thank you. And his focus will be to make our buses more safe, reliable, and respectful environments for all riders. Mr. Diggs has served as an Assistant Principal at Stafford High School for the last three years. Prior to becoming an administrator, Mr. Diggs was an instructional technology resource teacher, an ITRT, at North Stafford High School, where he was named the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen Stafford County Public Schools Teacher of the Year. But he began his career in Stafford Schools as a bus attendant and a driver. Mr. Diggs earned a dual Bachelor of Science degree in hospitality and tourism and entrepreneurship, innovation and technology from Virginia Tech, his Master of Education in Curriculum and Instruction from Mary Washington, and his Educational Specialist degree in Educational Leadership from Old Dominion. Most recently, and also most notably, he was also named Virginia's Assistant Principal of the Year for the entire state this past year. Mr. Diggs, thank you for sharing your time and talents with Team Stafford.
Thank you so much. Dr. Taylor and the school board, I am honored to serve in this new position. I am going to miss Stafford High School the most. I have had the most amazing time, and it has just been an honor to serve the students, the community, and a special thank you to my principal who is here tonight, Mr. Hicks. And I also brought along my husband, the other Mr. Diggs. And I am just very pleased and happy with the school division. As you know, I'm a graduate from North Stafford High School. I graduated in two thousand six, and my roots were always in transportation, and I'm so happy to return and serve in that role, excuse me. But it is, it is with some sadness that I'm going to miss the students that I serve, but I'm so excited about my next adventure. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Diggs. Madam Chair, this concludes administrative appointment announcements for this evening.
Thank you, and we will move on to our presentations. First, five point oh one, video recap of Mentor Three Sixty Prep for Success Week. And I just have to say, I was able to attend the first day, early in the morning till it was time to go pick up Ms. Guy and then serving dinner, and I, I just said, I, I think that there was two people that literally sat, I know, I'll name them, they literally sat in a room and said, I think we should, and the other said, I can do better, because that event for that day was just out of this world. It was really great for the mentors and the mentees.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This has been a passion project of the board since I've been the superintendent, and as a brief means of introduction, I would like to thank our collaborative team of school leadership, professional learning, and our Mentor Three Sixty mentors who mentor our new teachers to Stafford County. This is a week's worth of work that they put together for our new teachers to help induct them into our new school, their new school system, and to help train them so that they can rejoin the rest of their colleagues during Welcome Week. There's a lot of things that we will celebrate this evening, and this is one really fantastic highlight. So let's watch the video, and you'll see exactly what we're talking about.
Welcome to our panel.
What is the most important quality that you want in a teacher? What's something that you'd like your teacher to be like?
A teacher that is respectful to their students. As students, we must respect our teachers because they're basically our parents at school.
I want my teacher to be passionate about their subject.
I just want a nice teacher.
Sometimes there are teachers that are trying to be sassy and cool. When they're trying to do that, they're kind of just being rude to their students. That's, that's a problem.
I want a teacher that can teach me lessons I can use in the real world and that can adapt to the student's needs.
So I want a teacher who's nice to us and gets to know us, so they don't have to keep saying, hey, uh, what's your name? Is it, uh...
I want a teacher that is kind and patient.
So Madam Chair, we invited and had over four hundred people participate in our Prep for Success Week, and as you saw in the video closing out, we had many community partners that came to welcome and support our new teachers. At this time, I would ask with the board's permission that we give a round of applause for our new teachers and the mentors that supported them during Prep for Success Week.
Next on our agenda are awards and recognitions.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Taylor. This evening, we will recognize students, staff, and community members that epitomize our values of students, integrity, respect, community, opportunity, and excellence. Tonight, we will recognize our firefighting and EMT programs, our nutrition services department, our sports programs, a middle school for its commitment to school culture, and our school system for its work to provide valuable internship opportunities for students. At this time, will Master Technician Preston Topke and our fire programs student leaders Hunter Harmon, Leo Montgomery from Mountain View, Logan Janis from Stafford High School, Chance Preston from North Stafford High School join us at the dais? Will Ms. Lisa Davis and Jordan Gagliolo of Colonial Forge High School, key leaders in our EMS program, also join us at the dais? The school system's mission is to inspire and empower every student so that they are prepared to excel. As part of that mission, Stafford Schools partners with our community to provide real-world opportunities for our students. Recently, the Virginia Department of Education recognized the value of our partnership with the Stafford County Fire Department, awarding the program with a Region Three Secondary Business and Industry Partner Award as part of the VDOE's Creating Excellence Awards Program. The innovative program provides interested students with training in high-skill, high-wage, in-demand careers that begin right after high school. During their junior and senior year, students complete firefighter one and two courses at the Stafford County Fire and Rescue Training and Logistics Center. Certified Stafford County Fire and Rescue staff provide instruction, mentorship, and hand-on instruction that supports recruits in meeting the academic, mental, and physical demands required of the National Fire Protection Association. Stafford Schools is also preparing first responders through our award-winning EMT program. Led by Ms. Lisa Davis at Colonial Forge High School, hundreds of students have completed the program, and many are now serving as EMTs and paramedics. Ms. Davis prepares her students through teaching a style and an education environment that does not resemble a typical high school classroom. When EMT students enter her classroom, they leave Colonial Forge High School and are immersed in EMS Station four-two-seven. Students are organized in a four-person crew with a lead provider assigned. They check out their equipment, begin activities which may include daily duties and training, simulated emergency responses, personnel inspections, presentation, and administrative duties. One of those standout students is recent Colonial Forge High School graduate Jordan Gagliolo. Jordan earned her EMT certification in two thousand twenty-two as a junior in the EMT program at Colonial Forge while she was a member of the Fredericksburg Rescue Squad. As a senior, she served as a student instructor for Stop the Bleed. She developed a training platform and materials, scheduled and conducted training sessions, and evaluated the health and medical science students and EMT students to ensure they were capable of performing blood pressure checks. In addition to her passion for helping people, Jordan was a member of the chorus, show choir, theater, cheer team, and dance team. She competed with a competitive all-state cheer and competitive all-state dance outside of the school, and still earned an advanced diploma with an impressive four-point-three-nine-four GPA. The school system is not the only entity that celebrates success in career and technical education. This year, the Rappahannock EMS Council presented awards recognizing individuals and businesses for their dedication to the regional EMS system. Stafford Schools is proud to congratulate Lisa Davis on earning the Outstanding EMS Pre-Hospital Educator Award, and Jordan Gagliolo for earning the Outstanding Contribution to EMS by a Student Award. Jordan, you are a gift to the Stafford community, and we cannot wait to see where life takes you. Congratulations to all our first responders, our partners, our staff, and our students. Each of you represent what it means to elevate Stafford.
So we also have Chief Cardello in the audience, and I'm afraid you are going to have to come forward at this time to be in this picture. Thank you for your support of this program, Chief, and thank you for these additional students who are also in part of our program. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, will Mr. Brian Williams, Mr. Justin Freeman, and Ms. Heather Murphy please join us at the dais? Stafford Schools is incredibly proud to announce that our Department of Nutrition has been selected as a two thousand twenty-three winner in the BSBA Food for Thought Competition, Healthy School Meals in the above ten thousand and one student population category for its creative approach in providing healthier school meals through the implementation of a High School Culinary Cup competition. This initiative challenged and inspired students to create nutritious, locally sourced, and flavorful school meals in the absence of added sodium, sugar, and fat. The competition led to the creation of student-produced, award-winning healthy dishes, which have been added to the school system's menu. This is the second year in a row the department has earned distinction in the Food for Thought Competition. We are appreciative of the hard work and dedication poured into this initiative by our nutrition department. Thank you, Mr. Williams, Mr. Freeman, Ms. Murphy, and the entire nutrition team for your commitment to excellence. Will Mr. Mark Coleman of North Stafford High School and Mr. Greg Markheim of Mountain View High School please join us at the dais? Mr. Coleman and Mr. Markheim's schools were both recipients of the VHSL Spring Two Thousand Twenty-two, Two Thousand Twenty-three Sportsmanship Honor Rolls, two of only one hundred seventeen schools in the state to earn this distinction for not having any player or coach ejections and are not on any warnings. Thank you for your outstanding leadership and development of student athletes. Stafford Schools is honored to have such committed staff representing our division and mentoring our students. Will Ms. Amy Ivory and the Edwardie Drew Middle School Jostens Leadership Team comprised of Katie Lynn Demers, Ashley Dwyer, Rebecca Garrett, Joe Godsey, Alexis Reader, Kristen Russ, Rachel Moran, and Kathy Tobin please join us at the dais? Each of you leads by example to promote a positive school culture and climate that earned Edwardie Drew Middle School commendation as a Jostens Renaissance Platinum School of Distinction. Your work to inspire and empower every student is exceptional and exemplifies what it means to elevate Stafford. Now this time, will Mr. Jay Cook please join us at the dais? Joining Mr. Cook are Julia Dunn, Braden Greenfield, Jesse Jimenez, Alexander Jovanovic, Benjamin Plonka, Emily Rain, and Jacob Shelton. Benjamin Planka, Emily Rain, and Jacob Shelton. In coordination with Virginia Intern Day on July 27th, the Virginia Talent and Opportunity Partnership named Stafford County Public Schools among its 100 recipients of the 2023 Top Virginia Employers for Intern Awards. The annual award recognizes Virginia employers who provide high-quality internships to students. Stafford Schools was the only school system to be awarded with this distinction. Stafford Schools provided nearly 50 opportunities for student internships last year through its work-based learning program. As part of this program, our technology interns were provided with real-world learning experiences that help to ensure they are prepared for life after graduation in a competitive, high-demand career field. To those that will return next summer, there may be a few Chromebooks that will need your attention. Thank you for your service to Stafford Schools.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to our student rep report. Catherine?
Hello. So, I want to start off by saying that it's wonderful to see everyone. I think it's been a couple months since I've been in a meeting, so I'm so thrilled to be back. I'm going to go ahead and preface my report by saying that I did unfortunately catch a cold, so my voice is a little bit wonky. Please bear with me. So, I'd like to first just go ahead and say, welcome to all of our families for the 2023-2024 school year. It's absolutely crazy to say, we are so pleased to see you all again. So, today was our Transition Day, meaning that those who are transitioning to a new school, our kindergarteners, our sixth graders, our ninth graders, had an opportunity to explore their new schools without the pressure of instructional time. So, I had the opportunity to attend Mountain View's Transition Today, and it was so fun, super spirited, and I'd just like to say, welcome to all of our new Wildcats. For everyone who participated in Transition Day, whether as a kindergartner, as a sixth grader, or a ninth grader, I just want to let you all know from personal experience that it's okay to be nervous, to feel a little bit uncomfortable, to get lost, because I definitely experienced all of those things my first day. I promise, though I'm sure it all feels just a bit foreign right now, you're going to find your perfect fit in your new school, your perfect friends, and you're going to accomplish amazing things, and we cannot wait to see it. To our returning students, welcome back. It's so good to see you again, and we are thrilled to see you in another amazing year. So, moving on, I would just like to once again remind all of our students that Muraki and I put together a blog where we post important updates on the things that we have accomplished as student representatives, as well as the going on in the county. From the beginning of the school year starting up, Muraki and I will be updating more frequently, so please be sure to tune in. Additionally, don't forget that a part of our blog, a major part of our blog, is that we have a Google survey to allow any students to easily get in contact with us, so feel free to fill that, feel free, feel free to fill that out. Your voice is super important to us, and we want to hear your input as we're making our decisions. So, now, finally, something that I'm really, really excited to share with you is the Mental and Health Initiative, which has been in development with the past several months, and which I know I have brought to your attention. So, prior to the end of our last school year, we released a survey pertaining specifically to mental health. So, the survey was distributed to an approximate 20,000 students, which is a very impressive number, and we received about 7,000 responses from middle and high school students across the county. So, we were very, very pleased. The spread of data gave us very valuable insight into the mental health needs of our students. So, the survey asked a plethora of questions. Some pertain to recent mood trends, others coping mechanisms when students are struggling. And there was one question in particular that focused on students' support networks. So, for clarification, a support network includes the people surrounding you that provide you with support, encouragement, guidance, and love, and that could be a parent, a sibling, friends, teachers, mentors, and this is an essential part of life for anybody. So, one of the questions asked in this survey was, who do you talk to when you're not feeling your best? Students were given the options of an adult in the school, an adult out of school, a friend, or a parent, with the ability to select the other option and write in their own response. So, of the 7,051 students who completed this question, 662 of the students who selected the answer towards other went out of their way to write some variation of no one, nobody, myself, I feel like I can't talk to anyone at all. And this was almost 10% of the students that responded to the survey. So, this trend is very concerning, but the data we collected has been absolutely instrumental in allowing us to tailor the next steps of our mental health campaign. So, our goal with the facet of the mental health, of this facet of the mental health campaign is to expand students' support networks. So, I've worked with Dr. Taylor. Thank you so much for your support, and we will be doing this by reaching out to the people who are closest and care the most for our students, our parents. So, parents play such a critical role in their child's support network, but a lot of parents, through no fault of their own, just don't really understand the way that mental health disorders and mental well-being exists in pre-adolescence and adolescence. So, because of this, I have conducted research and put together an informative infographic designed for parents which will outline the following three things. One, how to help students develop healthy mental and emotional coping mechanisms. Two, how to identify early symptoms of common mental health disorders. And three, how to recognize and access important resources in and beyond our community. So, the main focus of this infographic is to encourage parents to break down the stigma that surrounds mental health by opening a conversation between them and their child. We want to ensure that all of our students feel as though they have a support system, and working with our parents is the perfect place to start. Moving forward, we additionally hope to provide informational handouts to both staff and students, but those developments are currently in the works. So, in the future, I would like to continue broadening students' support networks by eliminating the stigma surrounding mental health and making resources like school psychiatrists and nurses more accessible to our students. I do believe in the future I may have an opportunity to expound upon the results of these surveys, as well as the specifics of this campaign in a work session. Or if you do have any questions right now, please feel free to ask me. It is a school night, which is absolutely crazy to say, so Muraki and I will be leaving early, so if you have any questions, feel free to ask now or shoot me an email later. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Catherine. We really appreciate that. We will be moving to our citizen comments, and I believe we have no one. Okay. And, yeah. So, we're moving on to our action items. Action item 9.01, appointment of a school board member to serve as the Board's liaison to the Head Start Policy Council for the term of September 2023 through August 2024. I have spoken with Dr. Warner and Ms. Guy, and they will serve as member and alternate. Can I get a motion for that, please?
I move that we appoint Dr. Warner as our liaison to the Head Start Policy Council and Ms. Guy as her alternate.
Second, can I get, thank you. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns? Cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes unanimously. The second action item is adoption of an FY25 Budget Development Calendar. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the Budget Development Calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns? Dr. Chase?
Yeah. Madam Chair, I just was curious about the fact that the school board's presentation of the funding request is happening after the presentation of the county administrator's proposed budget.
Good evening. So, the school board's presentation is usually always that, so the, usually goes superintendent's presentation, county administrator's presentation, then school boards, and then, and then the Board of Supervisors still has an opportunity to weigh in.
Anyone else? Any questions? Ms. Kelly?
I would like to note that the, in response, which I think is a good point, Dr. Chase, the school board approves its funding request prior to the presentation of the county administrator's proposed budget. So, the county administrator will have the benefit of the school board's approved funding request. It just will not have been formally presented to the Board of Supervisors. And that has to do more with their availability and their scheduled meetings than, you know, any other intent.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I could add just an interesting piece of context, too, that this is earlier than previous years based on the county's adopted budget calendar. So, you know, Dr. Chase raising a red flag about this issue is germane because it is a couple of weeks earlier than how we have normally done our budget process in the past.
Yeah, every two years, when it's a reassessment year, the county usually bumps up their timeline to give them more times from the assessment to make final determination. So, we have to adjust our calendar to account for that, to make sure that the school board can approve in time to, before the county administrator presents, and then gives you an opportunity to present before the Board of Supervisors makes their final decision. There are extra meetings built in actually to this budget calendar for the school board and the Board of Supervisors to meet. So, unlike previous years, you guys had one opportunity to present and discuss. We have that opportunity. Prior to the Board of Supervisors making the advertisement of tax rates, they added a meeting this year, so in between when they advertise the tax rates and in between when they adopt the tax rates, it gives the school board another opportunity to weigh in and discuss on that decision with the Board of Supervisors. So, in my opinion, and I think we all agree, that any additional time that we can get to try to sell some of our points and make them aware of some of the challenges and what's in our budget and really get an opportunity to explain those items benefits us in the long run. So, I was pleased to be able to work that in with the county this year.
And I will say that that has been something that we have asked for, but then when they brought it forth, that it was in interest of theirs, I was also pleased in the three-on-three that they thought that would be a helpful thing to do. So, are there any other comments, questions, or concerns?
I have a question, actually.
Sure, sure.
I apologize, because I know we discussed this at Fab, but I've had a question since then. Is there a reason that the CIP town halls are not part of our budget calendar, whereas the budget town halls are? Because we start with the approval or the adoption of our CIP priorities. It might be nice.
The CIP town halls are on the budget. Maybe I'm misunderstanding.
Budget town halls, but we have the CIP.
The CIP town halls on here, August 29th and September 7th. They're broken up separately because they cross two months, so I apologize. It's not drawn out quite as clearly as the budget towns. If you look at August and September.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah. I just, yeah, I'm sorry. I just put some of the key dates as far as the approvals on, in the calendar, but the attachment has all the dates.
Okay. All right. Everyone, please cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, moving to our superintendent comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since the board's last meeting, there have been many welcoming's lately in Stafford Schools. Two weeks ago, we welcomed nearly 400 new licensed staff during Prep for Success Week. We saw the video that reflected that. Last week, we welcomed back nearly our 4,300 incredible staff members. Very excited to have them back. And though we had to postpone yesterday's Chalk the Walk due to weather, this morning and into this afternoon and this evening, and even right now, we have welcomed over 1,000 community members to Chalk the Walk as part of our Good Neighbor Network to write inspirational messages to our students and staff, welcoming them to school tomorrow. A special shout-out to Fire Engine Company Number Two and the county administrator's leadership team for helping me to chalk the walk at Anthony Burns Elementary School at midday. They wrote fantastic messages, and they got their dragon artwork down pat. It was pretty inspiring. Very, very grateful that they came out to participate, and thank you, Mr. Vosberg, and your leadership team for coming out to support. Today, we also welcomed our kindergarten, sixth grade, and ninth grade students to their new schools in our very successful and second annual Transition Day. It was a lovely reminder of our why, and we look forward to welcoming our entire student body back to school tomorrow. What an exciting week to be in Stafford County, Virginia. To that end, I'd like to give a huge shout-out to our teachers, staff, bus drivers, bus attendants, nutrition workers, parents, students, and all who have worked to help prepare for this great school year. Parents, thank you for trusting us with your children. This is going to be a great school year, and our staff are so excited to welcome your children into our schools and on our buses and in our cafeterias. As wonderful as all this is, I know that there is some trepidation in our community surrounding the addition of more modular classrooms in Stafford County. I want to take a moment to reassure our community that our children are safe and that we have and will have access to all of the same resources as all other students in Stafford County. The modular classrooms have heat and air conditioning. They do have security as well. All of our modular classrooms will follow the same procedures for lockdown drills, fire drills, et cetera. Schools with modular classrooms will work collaboratively with our Safety and Security Department to establish processes to keep our kids safe, and that is well underway. I had the opportunity to tour some modular classrooms today, and I was beyond impressed with what our teachers have done to transform those learning spaces. Modular classrooms are not new, though their widespread use is not, is new to Stafford County. This is also a strategy that we will continue to use until such time as we can adequately catch up with school construction, of which we are way behind. One rebuild and no new schools since 2008 has consequences, and we are living those consequences right now. Rest assured, we will get through this. I want to send a thank you to our Dave Peddingill on our facilities team, Jason Towery, Chris Fulmer, and a lot of staff on the county side who have worked tirelessly to ensure that every modular classroom has passed building inspections and is safe for our students to use before the first day of school. I would also like to thank the teachers who have worked doubly hard to make sure that those learning spaces are perfect for kids. I also want to thank our board for your endorsement of our rigorous plans to move forward with capital projects to respond to our growth crisis. As we open our doors to students and bus riders, to our student bus riders, please allow for our Transportation Department to have a little bit of grace. Every year, this is normal. We do have some delays that are incurred just by drivers getting to know their routes and students getting to know the procedures of getting on and off the bus safely and at the right stop. As a reminder to our kindergarten and first grade parents, we do need to have a responsible companion that is there to greet your student as they come off the bus. If there is no safe, responsible companion, we do have to take that student back to school, and as a consequence of that, that does delay routes for everyone else. So, please help us out with that, and we are certainly working through some of our longer and extended routes to shrink those a little bit and to be better prepared for this school year. I'm delighted to report that we have a full complement of bus drivers for the first time in several years. This is due to the hard work of a lot of folks working behind the scenes, but the credit really belongs to our bus drivers because they are telling the story of Stafford Schools, and they are sharing what a fantastic place Stafford Schools really is. So, thank you, drivers, thank you, attendants, thank you, transportation staff and HR, and for all of your hard work to make sure that we have a full complement of bus drivers. We even had an accident this afternoon on Route 1 that complicated our afternoon commute. We sent notice to parents, but all indications were that we had a great day at school and a great day through transportation. No, it was not a bus accident. That was independent, and we certainly hope that everybody is safe. On a more cheerful note, I want to take a moment to thank the Stafford community for supporting our annual Collect for Kids Supply Drive. In total, we were able to provide 1,550 backpacks and supplies to students in need. Thank you for your support and generosity, which has helped to fill an incredible need in our community. Looking ahead, I would also like to invite our community to support our schools in a few different ways. We will host our first Stafford Schools Restaurant Week, the Division- The Division-Wide Spirit Week will run from August 21st through August 25th and was the brainchild of a board member and supported by some of the members on this board. So, thank you, Ms. Guy and Ms. Sigman specifically. Thank you very much. During this week, a portion of your purchases at our identified restaurants will be returned to the school division to offset student meal debt. We hope that you will join us during this important week to be together, to celebrate community with one another, and also to contribute to a great cause. More information and locations, as well as hours for this restaurant week, will be provided in upcoming editions of Elevate Weekly, our weekly newsletter to families and to the community. Later this month, we will also host ESOL Nights on August 22nd at Moncur Elementary School and on August 24th at Rocky Run Elementary School. Our ESOL families are invited to learn about resources and opportunities that are available to our students. Additionally, the local organizations will be in attendance at the Fredericksburg Regional Food Bank, who will be hosting a Fresh Marketplace pop-up pantry on both nights. So, we encourage folks that are interested in that to please be a part of our ESOL Nights. We encourage our families to participate if possible. And finally, our Good Neighbor Network is at it again. This year, we will host for the first time ever our Fall Fling Senior Prom. This is a prom for all ages.
Not the first time.
Well.
North Stafford did it for years.
Well, we're glad to do it countywide this year, our first countywide one, and ironically, it will be at North Stafford, so we're glad that they want to host. We value every member of the Stafford community and look forward to hosting our 55 and up residents and their families for this very special event. Students, this is a great opportunity for you to share the spirit of the Stafford community with your grandparents. This prom-style event will take place at North Stafford High School on September 9th from 1 to 4. We will host a student art show and provide heavy hors d'oeuvres and music during this event, and we certainly look forward to seeing many of you there. Maybe you'll cut a rug with some of our citizens. And I did say that that was the last thing, but I have one more thing, and I'll close out with this. This is the last school board meeting for one of my cabinet members, and I'd like to thank Dr. Stan Jones for his service over the last few years. He's the Deputy Superintendent and Chief Academic Officer. Thank you for being a part of Team Stafford. Lisa, who was just appointed as our Director of Finance, before she came to Stafford, she worked for Axe of Prince William County, and Dr. Jones is going to be the CEO of Axe in Prince William County. So, very excited to keep you in the neighborhood and just a phone call away. Thank you, Madam Chair. This concludes superintendent comments for this evening.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to board member comments. Anybody want to go first? Who? Dr. Warner?
First of all, it was so good to see the little kindergarteners in their first day of school, and a special shout out to all the teachers and especially the bus drivers for your patience with our little ones. They had a wonderful time, and I know that it was a great experience for them today, and I think they really enjoyed that special attention that they got at the schools today. I think the Chalk the Walk was an inspired thing to do. I think the kids really have enjoyed it. I know a lot of the adults enjoyed coloring on the chalk, too. So, just a quick thing. I attended the Conference on Education with Ms. Randall and Dr. Taylor and went to a conference on suicide prevention in school. This was a very student-oriented program where each month they centered activities around different theme like kindness. They planned a walk, and it seemed like a really great way for students to connect, especially given what Ms. Beckham said about not often having somebody they feel they can talk to. There was a task force on school construction, and many of, as Dr. Taylor said, that we have huge construction problems in our county, and one of the issues that we have is that a lot of times the state and the Virginia Department of Transportation gives us mandates about how we have to do things, but the state's not really very good at coming up with funding to help us do that. So, many counties were complaining about similar issues there. I attended a roundtable discussion on remediation for English and math in elementary schools that was very targeted with pullouts, and it was being implemented in Goachland County. And it was, there was a lot of interesting topics discussed at these roundtables. And there was also, I think Hampton City was the one that we talked to about academies, which we have been looking at for our high school program. I just want to say what a great program Mentor 360 is. It's such, it's so good to see how well we support our new and incoming teachers and how welcome they are, and I think that was a great follow-up to our Summer Leadership Academy where we had the principals from each school in to try to build a strong team. And I think that this is going to be a great year, and I can't wait to see kids back in school. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Warner. Would someone else like to go next? I'll call. All right. Ms. Guy?
Oh, yes, hi. Very excited to be here. I'm so excited for this new school year. I don't know why, but all the kids in my neighborhood, everyone has been talking about how excited they are, and I don't get what the difference is, but I'm going with it. I think it's awesome. So, I've been saying to the kids, like, "You're going to behave in class," and, you know, whatever. But I do want to invite everyone out to Stafford Schools Restaurant Week because you all have to eat, so why not eat someplace that's going to give us money? That's my slogan. Okay? That's not their slogan, but that's the slogan that was in my head. So, please come out to Restaurant Week. If you're in the north, I'm going to try to make it to every single one, and if I can't, hopefully my fellow board members will show up. And then, you know, Halsted's got us for in the south, because I volunteered her just now. So, I'm super excited about it. I hope that it's a success, and I hope we can do it again. So, the Prep for Success Day was amazing. It was so exciting. I really loved being picked up and then chauffeured back home. That made me feel special. But I love seeing all the new educators, like how just excited they are to just be here and to want to share their passion and to give their love, you know, to the students. I don't know, it's just awesome. So, I thought it was great. They all talked about how much we fed them, and I thought that was great, too, because, you know, educators be eaten. So, okay, I had an interview today with a scout member who had to interview an elected official, and it was really nice. I said all good things to this kid. But what I loved is that he spoke about the atmosphere in the schools, how sometimes the kids are disruptive and the fighting and the angst and anxiety, but he asked, like, "We want to know what we can do to help." And I wasn't prepared for that. I was a little bit taken aback that, you know, the students want to help with this. And so, I think that's, you know, we have to give them more tools, I think, as a board. Like, we have to figure out ways to engage the students or, you know, ask Dr. Taylor to work his magic, and he figures out all these amazing things with his staff. You do, you do magic. But the fact that they want to help the situation, it just reminds you of why you're doing this, right? Because the students are amazing. So, to our new educators and even our tenured ones who've been here for a minute, good luck. You guys got this. I know you're going to have a good year. To all the parents, just breathe. You're the perfect parent for your child. Give them grace when they're crazy and just lean in with love. And to the students, remember you're here to learn, but have fun. Be respectful. Don't forget to ask for help or guidance when you need it, because smart people ask for help all the time. And that's it. We're just going to have a great year.
Thank you, Ms. Guy. Dr. Chase?
Well, happy beginning of the school year. I'd just like to give a shout out to all the people who worked all summer to make it look so easy on the first day of school. So, you know, I don't know how many people we hired for this year, but our HR department was working really hard. I know our transportation department was working really hard to figure out the routes. Finance was figuring out how to get everybody's paychecks there on time. I think, you know, a lot of work in the principals. I visited lots of principals this summer. They were all in the buildings, working really hard to get ready for the year ahead. So, I know it's going to be a great year, but we couldn't do it without everybody who worked really hard this summer to make it happen. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. Ms. Halsted?
I'm going to put a timer on you.
No, because when you do that, I just want to talk longer and longer and longer.
You need to clock exactly longer.
When I stop, there you go. But now you have to subtract all the seconds you just wasted from me. Anyway, so, it's hard not to catch the fever of everything that's been going on and to watch the video and to get excited. I was not able to be a part of all this this year. I had surgery a couple of weeks ago. I'm fine, but I'm still not supposed to be out and about. Just don't tell the doctor. Anyway, so, I have a few things to say, and I feel like this is, like, I'm kind of nervous and excited, too, about the whole thing, what the school year brings. You know, the start of the new year is always this huge promise for success looming in the background, so your expectations are really high and you're excited, and then inevitably being on the board, something happens and you're like, "Oh, what?" But, you know, for our kids, it's new friends that are made, old friends that are being reunited, routines that are reestablished, and things are happening. Now, this year is different, but it's our new different from last year, which was our new new. Now, we're in our new, you know, different potential. So, tonight, we have, thankfully, have gotten rid of all the jitters for our parents of kindergarteners, sixth graders, and ninth graders. I feel like all of these parents have one very, very, very specific thing in common, regardless of who they are, where they are, but they go to bed now each night knowing that they have to place their trust in the public school system to protect their children at all costs and through all means, but to ensure for their kids that our primary mission of education and academic, they're fulfilling those needs are met. It's no small task. It shouldn't be taken with any level of levity at all, and I don't believe we do, but these are difficult times. So, Catherine made a few comments, and I had some things written down, and I just, I'm going to adapt and adjust on the fly, so forgive me if I feel whatever, but she brings up some points that are very, very close to my heart. You know, of course, I'm an 80s kid, so I get it. I rolled my stone to school, and I chiseled out my notes on my tablet, but, you know, we went through all these growth phases as well back then, of course, but the impact on our childhood was what it was, because we didn't have access to 24-hour information. We weren't flooded with death and dying and tragedies 24/7. We didn't ask for the approval, I mean, maybe of our friends, maybe, but we certainly didn't seek it from millions of strangers across the world and the country, and we certainly didn't seek, you know, the like-me phase. It was easy enough just to tell someone, you know, to move along when you didn't feel like that. And so, for our kids, it hurts me every time I hear us say, "This is just normal, new behavior for our children." I think we are selling them very, very short when we say those things. This shouldn't be considered normal. This shouldn't be, this shouldn't ever be considered a time where we tell ourselves and rest on the fact that anything that comes out of social media should be adapted into our growth process for our kids. These are, there are very conflicting messages out there for our kids. There are exceptionally dangerous messages out there for our kids. And so, when I hear us roll something into the category of normal behavior or new for this time period, I really, really fear for what that means for our kids down the road. You know, our kids, they're forming, their brains are still forming, what do we say, up until 25. So, we flooded them with all of this crazy information from social media on down. And Catherine brings up the point that I really want to make, which is parental environment, the parental environment. I get not everybody has, some parents think it's cool to have social media and their kid being an influencer to everyone else. I don't know, but I do believe it's kind of time for us, and we saw it last year. We see it over and over and over again with the bullying, how social media bleeds into our school system and makes it really difficult for some of these kids just to feel normal every day. So, I want to ask the parents to please, this here, please, focus more on what social media is doing to your kids and how the social media influence bleeds into our school system and makes some of these primary missions for education to be exceptionally difficult in the day-to-day. It's a distraction. It doesn't help that kids start fights online, because nobody reads anything right from a text message or an email. Nobody picks up the phone anymore to say, "Hey, you said this. Did you mean it?" We just take it. And we saw it last year. We took it right to the fists. And so, I am praying that our parents are going to be more open to taking the cell phone away from their kids, limiting social media time for their kids, and making a commitment to the fact that we need a change in our school environment that is, that will enhance the mental health and well-being of our children. And to me, I believe that's somewhere that we start, that's one place that we start. When I was a kid, if another kid picked on me, my parents would, look, we didn't have money when I was growing up either. My parents, I didn't have things the other kids had, and my parents were like, "You'll survive. That's not going to make or break you." Well, we don't do that to kids anymore, because the influence is there everywhere. They turn around, it's so much more pervasive. And so, then we try to provide, and we try to give, and we make concessions, and we don't teach our kids the valuable lesson of, "You'll be okay. You're going to make it." So, I hope that's a message that we start to get more familiar with and more comfortable saying. I believe the concessions that we've made in the academic settings in the last years have hurt our kids in a way that, for me, I can only pray is not irreparable. The last few years, we've watched us battle over things that don't belong in the public school setting. And this is not to take away, I'll comment on Dr. Taylor's initiatives at the end. I don't want to take away from that in my comments, but honestly, we've spent so much time allowing the fighting to go on amongst adults inside our school systems as well. There's a part of me that wants to say shame on us and apologize to the kids for allowing these things to be pervasive in our school system. When they come to school, they should be worried about passing their tests, whether their makeup covered their zit or not, and whether they're going to get asked to prom. This year, I really hope to be a voice for those who continue to swim upstream. Our kids, our teachers that swim with them, regardless of whether they have the supports in place or not. I believe that the mission of the public school system, academics and education, is the single most important one that we have to offer our kids at any level, from parent down to administration. Hold on, I can't skip that part now. So, I feel like when I ran for this seat, I ran for it for one reason, and that was the future of these kids. I'm living my future. This is my future right here, right? Somebody before me fought for my future to make sure that things got put into place. And so, now I'm living that future, and I'm doing the best that I can. I fought my struggles, I've lived my life, I've done my thing, and so I hope that we're working to put those same things in place for our kids, because if we're not fighting for their future and we're only focused on the past or what's happening in this moment, then we're really selling the value of what we offer our kids short as well. So, I have no doubt, under the diligent leadership of Dr. Taylor, that we will have an amazing year. The team you have put together, we are also grateful to see that you have reached far and wide to make sure that we are bringing the best and the brightest to Stafford County. And so, for me, that does make the future brighter, and I take all of the things that I hold on my shoulder, and I don't offer them to anyone else but me, but I thank you for making so many less things sit on my shoulders. And I hope, as we focus on moving forward this year, that this group of ladies and I continue to make positive changes in our school system. The best of luck to the class of 2024. Catherine and Marla Ke left, but these two girls are literally awe-inspiring. Every time Catherine speaks, I comment on how much smarter than me she is. But I really hope that our students focus on what they're offering kids as well and the opportunity that they've been given. So, good luck. God bless. Get a good night's sleep, and just know that I'm here praying and watching for all of us in Stafford County.
Thank you, Ms. Halsted. Ms. Sigman?
I am also so excited to be on the eve of the first day of school, where we'll have everybody back together again. I do want to start with plugging Restaurant Week. I will post all of the locations that are partnering with us over the course of the week on my social media, and as has been said, we'll have some, you know, up north, some on the south, some are even going to be virtual, so Grandma in St. Louis can order dinner, and we will still get a cut of that purchase, and that's really exciting for us. This is my favorite time of year, this back-to-school vibe. I started with, Parker Ridge had a block party that was incredible, and then open houses are like my favorite thing. So, I was able to attend Anthony Burns, Rodney Thompson, and Colonial Forge with my children, but then also Winding Creek and Hampton Oaks, because I love the little kids, and... And I did go to Transition Day today at HH Pool and I saw a guest speaker they had there to talk about perseverance and he was awesome. Because if you're keeping, I mean, these sixth graders are getting a lot thrown at them today. And he held their attention for a good long time, which was really, really great. Students, I do hope you go out of your way to find your people at school and build that community around you. Find a club, find a team, an ensemble, whatever it is that you enjoy doing in your free time. There are people in your school that like that too. So, find them and meet up with them either on a flex time or after school or before school or at weekends. But that's really where the memories start to be made. You might think it's in your math class, sitting there with 30 other kids, but it's not. It's when you're doing all the other stuff you're doing. Parents, this is also my plug to join your PTO, PTA or other parent organization at your school. You don't have to have a ton of time to give them, but they will take all the time you do have to make your child's school a better place. Lastly, I wanted to say, when we voted on these trailers, I said I would visit them. And for all of the classrooms that were added to Winding Creek, Hampton Oaks and Park Ridge, I have been inside every single one of them. I will have to say my standards were very, like, my expectations were low, but they were fantastic. I did not feel like I was in a trailer. You know, I used to, my grandparents had a trailer out in the woods somewhere when I was growing up. And when you moved, you could feel it kind of moving back and forth and you could feel the wind shaking it and you could hear the branches and there was none of that. It was strong, it was stable. You said that they are, have heat and air conditioning. There's a little bit of jealousy amongst the teachers because the people in the trailers get their own thermostat in each classroom. So, they get to control their heat and air. They got, you know, new technology in there. So, that wonky screen that you might have had for three or four years, not anymore. So, I was really impressed. The room seemed bigger than I expected. I mean, it just really, I did talk to the admin that showed me around about their emergency preparedness plans, about how you're going to get kids to and from the bathrooms, about how they're going to get drinking water, refill their water bottles. All of the concerns I would have as a parent, they were above board. They were ready, they had answers, they didn't have to look anything up, they were on it. So, if you have any concerns at all, as a parent, I expect you to. These are your kids, but ask because they've thought of it and they're addressing it. And, you know, even at Park Ridge today, they were sitting there having a last-minute meeting of, of the things they still needed to do and, you know, the last night before Christmas kind of preparations before all of the kids arrive tomorrow. So, thank you to everyone who worked all summer to get it all done. I look forward to visiting more classrooms and I will not give them a cute name. They are going to be called trailers because I don't want to. I'm glad that they're awesome, but they are not schools. And that's what we need for all of our kids. And if we, they are certainly better than overcrowded classrooms. We do need our kids to kind of space out and spread out and have teachers with them in the right ratios to achieve the goals we want for our kids. And trailers will help us get there, but they are not the same as having school buildings for these children that should have them. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Sigmund. Ms. Healy?
Well, I, I think it's pretty much all been said. Thank you, ladies. I want to just add my thanks to our community partners, our parents and, and all the members of the community who continue to bless Stafford County schools with your support. We couldn't do it without you, very clearly. The video we saw today was a really good example. You saw the breakfast were sponsored, the, the food was sponsored. We had all the, the gifts, the things for the new teachers that were sponsored as well. So, thank you for making this a, a good place for people to work and want to come to. And I think that's certainly embodied in the low number of vacancies that we have this year compared to prior years. And what wonderful news that our bus driver positions are all full. I don't think I've ever remembered, remembered that having done. So, thank you. And, and Dr. Taylor, you and your staff who worked so hard since at least the day after graduation to get us to this eve before the first day of school and as well as the Transition Day, which I look at as should be a fun day as well. Want to wish all our students well. I remember my daughter who graduated a long, long time ago from Stafford Schools. Her first day in high school, she came back and said, "I made all new friends today." So, you're going to have a lot of old friends, hopefully. If you're new, they'll all be new. But, but I would encourage our, our students to just meet, greet and get to know kids that you didn't know before and take advantage of that because everyone has something to offer. And I think that that will go a long way in perhaps helping our, you know, mental health concerns that, that may be out there. You always feel free to talk to your, your counselors, your teachers, anyone at, at the schools. Such an exciting time. And Dr. Taylor, I apologize for interrupting you with the senior citizen prom, but that is one of my very all-time favorite events at Stafford Schools. And North Stafford had, had that for many, many years. The whole county of Stafford was invited. We used to have some of the senior communities, you know, bring buses of people in. We'd have the, the JROTC members escorting them in. They had, had the jazz band at North Stafford, which the people very much enjoyed. They had a lot of the, what's that called, that dancing? The line dancing that, that they had, the culinary. Students had amazing food. They had decorations which the people got to take home. They had flowers for the, the senior citizens. And some of the, the people even said they, they missed their proms because of varying, you know, events in the world and this was, this was a prom for them. So, so that's an event that's very special to me. I started going, I'll, I'll always remember my, my daughter and her friend, I think they were in the second grade. So, that was like 23 years ago or so. And they, they put a picture in, in the paper of them dancing because everybody was, you know, having such a good time. But it's, it's delightful and I'm, I'm glad it's countywide. And I'm hoping the other schools will be able to participate, you know, as well in the offerings because I always thought that the students got more out of those senior citizen proms almost than, than the seniors because it was so wonderful to see that, the interaction. And I would invite, you know, as many board members as that can make it to go because it's, it's just an amazing opportunity. So, I will, I will be happy to join you at Restaurant Week. You know, I, I always see you at Panera anyway. But, you know, let me know or, or Ms. Sigmund for the, the northern end. I did read somewhere that you had to show, some of them you had to show a flyer or something. So, when you put your announcements out, make sure what people have to, to show for the restaurants that require some kind of documentation for the, you know, the contribution to go to, to Stafford Schools as well. And, and I'm excited about school starting tomorrow. I'm excited about getting home, getting to bed early so we can all get up for those, that first class that starts at, what is it? 7:30? All right. Including, including Rock Hill Elementary, the only elementary school with the high school schedule. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Healy. I would also like to say I'm so excited for this school year coming. Having participated in the Leadership Academy that happened right after graduation at Stafford High School with Dr. Taylor and the principals and then their leadership team, they literally laid down the footprint for how this year was going to go and worked the entire summer to make that happen. And here we are with our open houses. Some, well, Fairy Farm didn't get theirs last night because of the weather, but they are up and running again. But I got to attend the open house at Dixon Smith, got to meet some new teachers, see some of my oldest son's friends who are teaching for the county. That was really fun and exciting. An old friend of mine is a new teacher there, got to visit her room. But, and then wander around the school and say hello to a variety of teachers and it was really fun. Transition Day for me, I met with high school moms that were transitioning ninth graders for breakfast this morning. So, I did it a little differently with them, got to hear some of their community input and I really appreciated that. I also stopped by Fairy Farm on my way to the meeting tonight to chalk the walk. And I really appreciate Deputy Brown getting on his hands and knees and doing his work on the sidewalks as well. He's their SPO. And I cannot wait to pop in and visit and see the hustle in these schools. They've worked really hard to make fantastic rooms and learning spaces for these kids. And I remember even my own first day being excited to open a new school, which isn't even close to new anymore, but having the opportunity to get excited about. And we didn't even have furniture. So, some church donated folding chairs so my kids would have seats in the rooms. So, that was a fun way to start the year. Yeah. So, I wish everyone on, that is working for Stafford County Schools, thank you for saying yes. Thank you for jumping in with both feet for our mission. Dr. Taylor has been a great inspirational leader for our staff, has put together wonderful staff that has really stepped up and made things happen. We can fire off some pretty good questions up here and they really do come through with a lot of answers, questions that you send to us, questions that we come up with on our own. So, we really appreciate all of the staff that have put forth the extra efforts for us, all of the building support, getting the everything cleaned and ready, all of the buses, getting them cleaned and ready, running your routes. It's just an amazing, amazing hustle time of the year. And to all of our community, we ask that if you normally have a time that you leave your house to get somewhere, you add a little bit more time and a lot more patience as we are loading, over 30 thousand kids are loading into vehicles of their own, their parents or our buses to get to their learning places. So, we ask that you be mindful of the bus, buses that have their, the stop arms down. Be mindful of the drivers that are piling up on the road to drive, drop their kids off. New kids trying to park cars that they haven't driven very often in small spaces. So, we just have a lot to be excited about for the rest of this week. So, I thank you for everyone's time this evening. I would also like to remind our citizens that, you know, we have started a school year and we intend to make you a part of it, to meet us as board members at our CIP Town Halls on August 29th at 6:00 PM at Drew Middle School. And we'll do a second one on September 7th at 6:00 PM at North Stafford High School. And us ladies up here will be attending and can't wait to hear your input because we're starting school, but we're also starting budget. Our next monthly board meeting is September 12th. Work session at 5:00, normal business meeting at 7:00. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Have a great evening.